Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting for July 28, 2022. The meeting is obviously being held remotely and we are, it is being recorded. So on the agenda today, we do have two public hearings, one for 100 Chestnut Street, the other one five for 501 Pond Street. And both of those public hearings will be discussed tonight. We have a few other items on the agenda and lots of little reports and things like that at the end. But the two, the major component of the meeting tonight is, is those two public hearings. So the first one on the agenda is the continuation of the 100 Chestnut Street Site Plan Review. Peter, can you give us a summary of where we are with this? I think we're continued from the end of June. Was that right?
That is correct. So the last time this, this, well, good evening, everybody. I tell people to not check. So just to reintroduce the project and put on, excuse me, June 23rd. That was the last time the planning board discussed this project. And at that point, we talked about the site plan, the design, the architecture of the buildings. And the planning group at that point sent the plan off to be reviewed by our third-party engineer, GCG Associates. With that said, the applicant and the applicant's engineer have been working diligently, I must say, with our third-party review engineer. With that said, our third-party review engineer, GCG, has submitted two letters to the town of Ashland. One is dated, excuse me, the first one is dated June 21st, and then there was a submittal in a response to the comments that were submitted by our third-party consultant, and this was submitted with the date of July 1st regarding the site plan and special permits of the residence apartments. This response was done by Civil Design Group LLC. In addition, Baystone Development, here represented by Mr. Roy McDowell and his two sons. They submitted a letter to us responding to some of the comments. That letter was dated July 6th. And then also there was a memorandum from MDM Traffic Consultants concerning traffic, traffic review. With that said, civil plans were resubmitted along with a stormwater plan. And then that was again revised, no, excuse me, reviewed by a third-party engineer. And then all comments were summarized in a letter, which was circulated and dated July 21st. So at this point, having a conversation with our review engineer, most of, if not all of the civil and the engineering elements have been brought up to par, and they are on the same page as our talent engineer. There's a couple outstanding items, which I think can be discussed regarding parking and the stormwater detention basin, which was developed as a whole concerning the Village of America's development. With that said, I think tonight, the planning board and the applicant should number first have a review of the civil plans, and then we can get into a discussion of the, the two letters from GCG and all other elements that were resubmitted. I know I'm fairly long-winded, so just hold on one sec. I just also want to note the applicant has submitted a updated elevation in trash. Rendering, updated parking plan, updated site plan, planting plan, and photometrics. And I think those are all elements that their applicant, excuse me, their engineers looking to review tonight with the planning board. So all elements were found, will actually can be found on the town website and are circulated out. So that is where it stands, Tricia, or Chair. And I, at this point, would hand it over to the applicant if there's no questions of planning board members at this time.
Yeah, I would just say that I think the focus of the meeting tonight, obviously, is the, is the engineering report. Obviously, the board is always free to touch on anything they, they think is appropriate at this time. But I would hope that in the presentation, that we avoid any kind of repeated information and really just focus on the new things while familiar with the project and I'd rather not kind of introduce it again at this, at this time, and rather spend our time really focusing on the issues at hand so that we can get deeper into those during, during this meeting. So I don't know who I'm turning it over to. Is that?
Roy McTell from Baystone Development. Thank you. With us this evening is, Peter had mentioned, we do have Matt Leidner, who was discussed momentarily, our stormwater and is back and forth with GCG, which I think went very well. We also have Matt Marotter, if we should get into any architectural discussions. As Peter had mentioned, we have submitted, we will be submitting a new lighting plan, reducing the height of the poles. And with the new photometrics, we've also submitted a revised planting plan, which has increased significantly the amount of indigenous plant material to 75%. So if it's possible at this point, if we could turn it over to Matt Leidner to review his conversations and his report with GCG.
Great. Thanks, Roy. Good evening, board members. Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group. So I'll give an overview of, of kind of what has transpired between Baystone and our firm with, with your peer review engineer. So as was mentioned earlier, we received the peer review letter, the first peer review letter from GCG, your engineer, toward the end of June, on, on June 21st. Most of the comments in there were sort of to clarify some of the engineering details, kind of nuts and bolts of the plan, add some more call-outs and information to clarify some areas on the plan. So I'm happy to go through if there's any specific questions on those items, but I thought I'd focus on sort of the more substantial comments that they had, which, which all pertained to the, the stormwater management approach that we had taken on the original plan. And how that related to the design of the, the onsite, you know, stormwater management system that we were proposing. So what it boiled down to in that letter was that GCG did not entirely agree with our, sort of our fundamental approach to stormwater. And the, the difference of opinion really, to narrow it down, was, was based on sort of how much credit we were taking for some of the existing stormwater infrastructure that is out there that was built and approved previously years ago as part of the, the Village of America's project. So GCG felt pretty strongly that we needed to kind of take a step back and have this particular project stand a little bit more on its own and not rely as much as we had originally in the design on some of that existing infrastructure. So there were several comments that, that fell into that category of, you know, of the overall stormwater management approach. So what, what that led to, and, and, you know, and we submitted a response as, also as mentioned earlier, July 1st, we submitted a response letter. We had spoken back and forth with GCG, had some great discussions with them and got on the same page with what we needed to do. And we submitted a revised plan, response letter, and revised or updated stormwater report as well on July 1st. And so, so the, the major change that we made to address their concern was to significantly increase the amount of stormwater management being proposed on this site, on this project. So we more than doubled the size of the infiltration system on the site. So the site flows, the majority of the site now flows into this infiltration system, which was vastly expanded. And then the, the overflow ultimately makes its way downstream to some of the existing infrastructure that was previously put in place. But this system now on this site can stand on its own, meets today's stormwater standards. There was also a question as to when that system was built, that standards were a little bit different. They're a little more stringent now, so we've, we've brought that all up to date. The, the system on this site up to date with today's stormwater standards, so it can stand on its own. It's, the amount of infiltration that is now provided on this site is significant. We are significantly more than, than previously. We're collecting much more of the water or the runoff from this site. So we've redone the stormwater collection system. The, the series of catch basins and pipes and treatment units that collect the stormwater and convey it to the infiltration system. We've redone that network to bring more of the runoff into the system. So we increased the size of the system and we're taking more of the site into the system to infiltrate it. We also changed the standard that we were using to treat water quality from what we had done previously was the first half inch of rainfall. GCG felt that we needed to up that to the first one inch of rainfall. It's called the first flush, so that the first portion of the rainfall typically contains the most contaminants in the runoff. So we increased that to, to treat the first inch of runoff, which is a higher standard. So this system accomplishes that as well. And so we responded on, on July 1st with updated plans with this new, larger, better system. And we just recently on the 21st received a, a response, a second response or second review letter back from GCG. And so that review letter, there are a handful, again, of kind of nuts and bolts type little engineering clarifications remaining. But they did, as far as the, the infiltration system, they were on board and agreed with the updated system. The only comment that they had relative to that system, and it was, it was a carryover from the previous letter, and we've discussed this with them. They'd like to see an additional test pit, soil test pit performed within the footprint of the proposed system. So we were out there and, and performed test pits on site. The issue we ran into came down to the fact that there are existing buildings and pavement and utilities with existing buildings that are on site that are preventing us from doing a test pit right in the footprint of the proposed system. However, we have soils data for the site and we did do test pits, including one nearby to the system, just not in the footprint. And so our assumptions, we feel are very reasonable that we've made. And I, I don't know if GCG's here tonight, but I think they would tell you the same thing. However, they have recommended that prior to construction, once the applicant takes control of the site and the buildings are being decommissioned, we get out there and do a test pit right in the footprint of the system. And we're, you know, I, I can say on behalf of the, the applicant, we're happy to take condition to that effect to, to do that, as sort of a confirmatory test pit at the time of construction. All the other comments that, from their most recent letter were extremely minor as far as the engineering plans go. And we felt, and I, again, I don't know if they're here tonight, but I, I think they would tell you the same thing, that they were on the, on the level that could just be handled in terms of just a condition that we incorporate them in the, the final set to be submitted back to you for endorsement. That we didn't need to go back and forth for another round with these comments.
Can we, is it possible to put the, the site planned for the stormwater, stormwater management up and just kind of go through it a little, just diagrammatically that way so that, yes, to kind of show us visually what, what, what you were looking at and where the area doubled, where the infiltration system doubled lies?
Can you just confirm you can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So this is the site here, of course, Chestnut Street, Queen Isabella on the left, America Boulevard on the right. This is the, so the two buildings are these gray L-shaped shapes. The infiltration system is, is this over here to the left of building one. So the, the site, the topography that exists out here and is also proposed is that America Boulevard is high relative to Queen Isabella. So the, the site flows from right to left or south to north on this plan. So the stormwater management on this site wants to be and really needs to be on the north end. That's the low end of the site. So everything's flowing that way. So the, even on the previously submitted plan, before we increased the system, the infiltration system was in this area, under this parking lot on the north side. So we have a series of catch basins and manholes all throughout the site here that collect the majority of the site. There are, there are some areas that they do not take in. However, that's accounted for in the stormwater report and, and allowed. You don't have to collect 100% of the runoff. There's a 65% minimum that you need to collect and run through your system, and we meet that standard. So we collect the majority of the site, both along the east side of the buildings and the west side of the buildings. And we pipe it downhill to, toward this infiltration system. We run it through water quality treatment units. I'll zoom in here, left side. So there's a trunk line coming down the, the west side, the front of the buildings here, goes through water quality unit, then comes into this infiltration system. Another trunk line coming down the east side, same thing, water quality unit, infiltration system. This infiltration system acts as one system. It's, it's tied together. So we did keep sort of a corridor in between. So this is a system of plastic arch chambers, similar to pipes, but they're, they're elliptical in shape. They're not round. They sit on a bed of stone, water goes into them, infiltrates into the ground. And there's an overflow here. Once they fill up to capacity, the water would overflow out this pipe through a series of structures and discharge into what's on the north side of Queen Isabella Way. It's not depicted very well on this plan, but is a large existing detention basin.
Matt, and that's the system we, that area right there is this area we really increased the size of, correct?
Yeah, this area here was much smaller on the previously submitted, the originally submitted design. So this underground system here is what more than double in size. But not only did it double in size, we are now piping a lot more of the site into it than we were previously. So there's, there's, there is some existing stormwater drainage infrastructure on this site that conveys water through the site. On the original design, there were many areas that we were tying directly into that, that existing trunk line, which does not go through this proposed system. It goes to that existing pond on the north side of Queen Isabella, but not through this infiltration system. So we've completely redone the onsite pipe network to bring most of the water now through this enlarged system before any overflow would go out to the existing detention basin. So it's really, it's in the same location and doubled in size, but you know, what, what most people probably wouldn't appreciate is the conveyance system getting it to the, the, this system is completely different now as well to get more of the water into it.
Does the, does the water from the roof also find its way into that same system or is that a different system?
No, that, that's a great question. Yes, it does. There's a small portion of the roof up on the, on the southern side of building two that does not get into that system, but about 75 to 80% of the roof area of both buildings get into the system as well.
Okay. Thank you. We can, you can continue with, continue with your explanation. I just wanted to get a visual on this.
Well, so I, I really, I think that's, that's kind of it, unless there's any other questions that, you know, that's really the, that's the substantial change that is now reflected on these plans as, as compared to the originally submitted plans.
I, I think the other question for me, because I know it's related to this and it's related to your mention of the detention basin, that there's, that seems to be still something that's getting worked out, the detention basin that has been a part of, just a, a part of this whole area and, and how is that related to the project? Where is that discussion right now? My, my sense is that it's, that it obviously started way before this project, but it has not, has not been properly maintained perhaps through the, through the years.
Yes, Roy McDowell speaking. I can speak to that. So we went back and I think Peter may have also, we look back to, I think it was like 2007 plans. And it does detail on the, the cover sheet on those plans, the operation and maintenance of that. And I made aware to the people at Faford and the management of the condo association that, that's sort of been neglected for a number of years. And it's going to be someone on that side of the ledge's responsibility to not only take the trees out of it, most likely have to muck it out and do as ever appropriate and necessary to get it into the condition it needs to be in. And after that, I don't know whether it's annual, biannual, whatever the O and M calls for, needs to be maintained in the future. So they're well aware of that at this point.
Okay. I'm, I'm just going to make an announcement that we're not going to take any non-planning board questions at, at this time so that we can get through the, first of all, get through the presentation, get through the major issues. And then we will come back. Obviously, if the planning board has any questions as we go along, please, please be sure you, be sure you ask them. Okay, so Roy, are you handing it off to someone else for the next part of?
Would you like to see the revised lighting plan on the photometrics for that?
Yes, I think anything you have that's new that came up either in the, for GCG or even discussions with the design review committee, things that were asked for, all of those things would be great to see.
Okay, great. GCG, in fact, did say that our poles didn't meet the standards for height. So we, we lowered them down and we've brought them into compliance. Eric, do you have that or does Todd have that?
I have it. I just need to be able to share. Well, I'm sorry, Todd. Oh, looks like I, I got it now.
So originally, we had 20-foot poles and, you know, cast a certain amount of light by reducing the poles. Eric, are they now 15 or 16 feet?
They're 15 feet.
15 feet. So when we did the new photometrics, it required quite a few more poles because the height of the pole is a direct correlation to how much light it spreads. So this is the new photometric plan, which if we haven't, we'll send it over to Peter.
What you're looking at is actually the old plan and then the new plan is secondary to that. So you'll see it right, right here. That's the, that's the old plan. This is the new plan.
So basically, we've just, the simple answer is we've just added additional fixtures because of the, the less height.
Can you zoom in on an area of that and just show us, show everyone kind of what, what we're seeing here? It's such an intense, small scale that it's kind of a difficulty rate.
I'll get right in. We'll go into the example.
Why don't you go to the courtyard, maybe?
Of course, well, that, yeah, the courtyard didn't change.
We're seeing all the expected light readings.
Yeah, so this is just a, an example of the expected light readings. Eric, can you read that? Do you want me to go in further?
Yeah, no, that's okay. At least we can see that there are numbers and that little, you know, not just a hatch or something like that, that it's information that's being given.
So I believe this will now meet the parameters of what GCG was asking for.
Could I, could I just ask a clarifying question? I, I see that's, that GCG had another letter of July 21. Will there be a response to that as well from the applicant?
Matt, do you have a response to that?
Well, in, in terms of the, the engineer, the plan-related comments, what, what I spoke about with, with GCG and hopefully they've related to. what, what I spoke about with, with GCG, um, and, and hopefully they've related to, to the board and, and to Peter is, the comments at this point, they're so minor in terms of the, the, the plans that they're just, you know, for, as an example, uh, on the, the detail for the drain manhole, they want us to add a brick invert in the, on the detail. Right? So it's like on, on that level of minor. So what we talked about is, is we, that I, and again, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I believe they were in agreement that there's, there's just a handful and they're so minor that, you know, hopefully the, the board would potentially entertain the idea of just conditioning any approval based on addressing their final, uh, comments in the, in the final set of plans that we submit back to the board for endorsement. So we envision that we'll submit another final set of plans back to you to be endorsed ultimately if, if, if hopefully this, you know, if and when this project is approved. So, um, these, these kind of fell into that category in, in our mind and, and I believe that GCG agreed with that. So the, the long answer to your question is unless you require it, we have not planned to
I mean, I mean.
Other than
I mean, what I see is quite a few issues were fully resolved and I think that's excellent. But the, the items in red that they have in their letter, they do seem to be very somewhat, we, you know, somewhat important, whether it's parking or certain access points to Isabella Way. These are things that I can see us as a board wanting to hear more about from, from you guys and to kind of think through. So, you know, I'm, I, I definitely want to see kind of where the board is at, but I, I think that this letter is so recent that it would be helpful to understand whether from GCG directly to the board. I don't know if, if GCG would, you know, appear or permit themselves to be here so that we can get a little bit more detail on some of these issues. But I, I, I have a difficult time kind of looking at them as minor. I think they're going to require some discussions.
Matt, do you want to go some of those right now?
Yeah. So, and I also want to clarify what, what I was trying to convey that any plan revisions associated with these comments are, are minor. There are some other comments in there such as the maintenance of the existing detention, things like that, that the board, you know, may want to discuss further. But in terms of any plan revisions, those items are all, are all minor. But yeah, if there's any specific ones you want to go through or, or we can go through all of them, that's helpful.
Matt, do you want to bring up the plan showing that access off of Queen Isabella that was brought up that I think Anna, Anna mentioned that we can just show them the ease access, how it's an access road to the second, secondary building?
Yeah. So one.
Do you want to blow that up a little bit, Matt?
Yep, yep. Let me, uh, let me zoom in here.
And, and just to kind of give context, I, I definitely think it would be helpful for the board, you know, with Tricia's permission that we go through these remaining kind of red items and really make sure that each one is addressed by the applicant or that the board is able to resolve them as we go, especially the parking.
Yeah, and there, there are definitely issues on here such as the, the parking, um, these issues that are more related to the design of the site versus, versus, um, versus as there is saying, some of the, the little, the little things you're picking up on any set where, um, a layperson wouldn't even be able to know the difference versus things that, um, like this, which I think are, are definitely in the, in the realm of, um, worthy of discussion. So I agree with that.
So this is, uh, zooming in a bit on the access drive from Queen Isabella Way here. There's an access into the site, uh, from Queen Isabella as well as the one on Chestnut. So one of the comments was relative to, if you see this dashed line that comes down here, parallels the property line, that's a twenty-five foot side yard setback. So your zoning bylaw states that, I'm not reading it word for word, but essentially what it states is that the twenty-five feet should be a, a vegetated buffer except for where driveways run through it. And those driveways are effectively parallel to the, the roadway. So we have, um, this access drive coming in from Queen Isabella here. And so there are two areas where the access drive is within that, that, um, side yard setback here. And then you can see it clips it here as well. And so our understanding and our position, and we've read the zoning many, many times over, uh, based on this comment is that it's you know, from our standpoint, it's clear to us that, that this scenario is allowable by the zoning. Um, they're both driveways. There's no parking within it. It's, it's just the driveway. Um, and it's effectively, you know, parallel to the, the, the roadway. So that is the, that's the comment from, from GCG is, I think they're pointing out to the board that we do have the driveway within, or, you know, portions of it within that setback. And they're pointing out that there is a requirement in zoning that only driveways that are essentially per-perfectly the road be allowed in that setback. So this is the, this specifically is the area that that comment is pertaining to. So if I kind of just go through, you know, not to jump around here. So their first comment is regarding the, the existing stormwater base. So, so now I'm going through the July twenty-first letter. Their red comments were
Pull that letter up, Matt? We can pull it up if you don't have it available.
I don't have it readily available.
Do you want me to pull it up, guys?
I got it.
So while he's pulling it up, the, the, the first comment, I'll just say it's, it's on page two is, um, relative to the existing stormwater detention basin, which Roy had, had discussed the, the, the lack of maintenance of that basin over the years and how that is planned to be addressed. So that's the bottom of page two. Yep, right there. So we're just focusing, the red comments are GCG's remaining comments at this point. So that's the first comment. We've, we've discussed that.
By the way, if we could just stop there, if you, if you read that comment where it says, recommends that this be made part of the approval, a process, we're fine with that. Because it needs to be done.
For your, not, not only for the whole site, but so that your system works as intended. Is that right?
Absolutely correct. Next, please, Eric.
Yeah. So top of page four. So if you scroll down, keep going right there. Um, so I don't know, Todd, do you want to take that number two there? Town council confirmation required?
All right. Didn't realize I'm muted. Um, when we took a look at this and talked with town council, when the whole debate about the, the area for the whole project versus the site came up, when we did the A and R for this particular parcel, this part actually still met that criteria for the number of units in area required. But the parcel we were doing the A and R off of wouldn't, the remaining parcel where the townhomes currently exist, wouldn't meet that threshold. So that's when there was the discussion about the overall project versus this individual site. And, um, so just, just, uh, I think town council's been on, uh, previous Zooms and discussed this and and I, I, and if there's clarification needed, I think that's worthwhile. The town, we're asking that.
Peter, Peter, this is what our discussion a few meetings back, um, with town council on, on the NAR, um, the A and R was all about. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, this is the whole discussion about the A and R that we've vetted through, uh, we've vetted through. And, uh, their attorney, Jeffrey Roloff, put together that large historical packet and timeline of the, of the development of the building Americas. But obviously that was reviewed by town council. So, um, in, in the process of doing that, uh, I can check, I'll, I, I will run, run obviously this through, uh, town council, but that this, that comment is, is, is within that realm of the conversation around that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number three. Todd, can you take that one too?
We, we, we will meet that requirement. That's not a problem.
And this, this meeting ten percent?
Yes.
And is there, um, has there been discussion of a larger percentage for affordability?
Well, we've heard about that, but we're, we're just, it's just not financially going to be feasible for us in this particular project, given the tremendous amount of additional requirements we're dealing with at this point.
We, we, we've been proposing ten percent from the beginning and that's where we are today.
Yeah, and, and that's what's, that's what's in the bylaw, uh, and that's what, going back to the development of the building Americas, it's always been ten percent.
Yes.
There's a note in the covenant concerning that issue. Uh, excuse me.
Todd, what's the next red, red item?
Eric, scroll down. So the, the parking, we had MDM at a previous meeting, present a slideshow and, and regarding one of their previous reports about the actual space required, number of spaces required for this, where you have the kind of two-point-oh parking spaces per unit required, which if you could look at it one way, we meet, but then we wouldn't meet the commercial. That's why we filed for a special permit on parking. And, um, I, I think by their analysis, if I recall, some had there saying we have an excess of a hundred parking spots because really the demand for the commercial use, uh, is really when there is a lot less demand for the residential use during the hours of eight to seven or whenever the hours might be for the commercial use. And, you know, we, we are asking for relief on that as part of the, uh, special permit. But based on their data that we, we submitted previously, that shows we have far more parking spots than we will really require. But, you know, we like to be safe to make sure we do have, you know.
What's the next one? Eric?
We, we don't have a problem with limiting those hours. Uh, number five.
Next, please.
So the next one right there, number three, that, that pertains to what we just spoke about, uh, a few minutes ago, which is that driveway, where it, it, um, it runs through that, um, side yard setback. The next one after that, number five, um, is pertaining to a walkway. So the, the question of whether there should be a walkway connection from this development directly out to Queen Isabella Drive. So currently the, within this development, there's, there's walkways all throughout. And then there's a connection to Chestnut Street sidewalk, which does ultimately connect to Queen Isabella sidewalk. But, but there's not
May interrupt. The, the reason we didn't put the sidewalk connecting there, that was really driven by the neighborhood and they much preferred not to see a connection to Queen Isabella at, at that, that intersection for the apartments who rather have apartment pedestrians head out towards Chestnut, which they could then walk down towards the dog park or up and down Chestnut. But that, that's what drove that decision.
And we have, we have added a set of steps and a ramp at the front of the building, a parking area going to Chestnut as well.
Can you just plan up just again to, you can see that?
Yeah, could you, and could you specify kind of what you mean by resident concern? Any particular group of residents or how, how is that?
Our neighbors to the rear wanted, um, as few a access points coming off our site going out to Queen Isabella as possible. I think they're afraid of dog walkers and other people coming down through there and then going up Queen Isabella. And now that we have the entrance on Chestnut Street and we're developing a dog park, we feel very comfortable. People go out the entrance we created in the ramp and stairs on Chestnut, walk down the street to the dog park. Can you blow that up a little bit?
Yeah. So we're, okay. So we're talking about that down here on Chestnut Street. So we have this stamped, you know, concrete element here to, for pedestrian crossing the, um, the, the parking area here. And then what we have on the plan is, um, a set of stairs down. So this is the existing sidewalk here along Chestnut Street. Set of stairs down to it and also a, a ramp down, down to it as well, accessible ramp system.
And the comment was referring to the kind of rear access at Queen Isabella. If you want to zoom in on that.
Right. So zooming out, we, we were just looking at Chestnut here. So the, the comment was relative to this access back here where we are intentionally not proposing a direct connection to, to Queen Isabella. So we don't have a sidewalk up along the driveway here connecting to Queen Isabella. And that, that goes back to what, um, Todd had mentioned relative to the concerns of the neighborhood.
Could you go back to the letter, Eric, please?
And there is no connection to the America Boulevard directly because of slope reasons. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, number six. And I've had this discussion with Peter for full disclosure. It talks about offset markings, et cetera. That, that needs a lot more than markings as, as Peter's brought to my attention. The main entrance coming in on Queen Isabella for the first, I'm going to guess six hundred feet or so only has a binder course. And the same thing is true of Chestnut Street out front. So those two sections of road at some point in time will need to be completed.
I, I believe Peter mentioned to us that, um, he's talked with the Faford companies. Peter, you can update us, give, verify that, that about finishing that kind of punch list. That's outstanding with that.
Yeah. So just to give ahead, uh, updates on planning board, uh, the Faford company, over years of development, there is a punch list that needs to be completed. That punch list, uh, was really been, been handled by the DPW. And, and I'm happy to circulate that punch list out. And so as part of that punch list, there's a number of things on there from, you know, gate valve boxes and, 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 and most things. However, the biggest, one, one of the biggest things is the entry is that right now there's all binder course at the Queen Isabella in the Chestnut Street entrance. Uh, and then obviously that the, the markings in the street regarding the fog line and the turning lanes and the, um, the, the paint per se, uh, is missing. And, and so that has always been part of the, the punch list on the Faford company as they complete the build to the Americas. And so that's something that the DPWs have always been working on. But I think the biggest thing is we don't want to lose sight of what is still remaining on the prior phases to the build to the Americas. Now, it doesn't make obviously Mr. McDowell or based on development responsible for that punch list. However, I think we just need to note as the planning board is that the Faford company and the developments, uh, and the phases that have taken place, um, need to be completed. And, and this is a way to just to make sure that that conversation is still, that conversation is still being had. And, and I can update the board and, and this goes back to, I believe, last, late last spring, last fall, is that the DPW organized a meeting with the Faford company to, to, to go over that punch list. GCG was involved in that conversation as well. And, and, and this comment is really to bring to light those issues that are on that, uh, two thousand and fifteen punch list, uh, which is seven years old.
Thank you, Peter. Next, please.
So the next comment here, uh, pertains to conditions of approval that were in one of the previous approvals.
I will bring those up.
Yeah, that pertain to
Before you bring them up, Eric, why don't we finish this list and we'll get to that?
Okay, yeah, we can go back to that if we, if we finish this. Okay, good idea.
I'd say, I'd say number seven, did, did we touch on that? That, that's just kind of regarding what we discussed earlier. Nope, back down. No, number seven was the conditions of approval.
Yeah. So number seven's conditions of approval.
Okay. All right. Number eight as well. Sorry.
So we, we will switch over to that, um, once we get to this letter here. Okay, keep going. Keep going.
That's the drainage, part of your drainage, right, Matt?
Right there. Yep.
That's verifying.
The number nine is, um, pertains to what I The number nine is pertains to what I had mentioned earlier, which is a confirmatory soil test pit prior to construction. Once we can get into the area where the existing buildings and utilities and parking lot are. Number 10 is the same comment, confirmatory test pit. Number 15, if you scroll down, so GCG, so the there's a refuse management building on the plan where folks can take their their trash and recycling. And the plan currently has roof, the the roof drains from that building. We take them underground into a pipe and pipe them into a catch basin. GCG has asked that we let the roof drains instead spill onto the the gutter downstream spill onto the ground and have that water flow superficially to the same catch basin that we were piping it to, but so that it spills into the grate of the catch basin. So that's another.
Can you comment on why they would recommend that? Is there some?
No, I disagree with their rationale, but I respect it, and it's an easy enough change to make. Their thought is that if we pipe that roof drainage into the catch basin, it has the potential to stir up the sediment, any sediment that's in that basin and the sump of that basin. The discharge from the pipe could stir that up. I think the same is true if the water comes in through the grate. But nonetheless, it, you know, I don't feel that strongly, and and that's their recommendation, and we have no problem adjusting the plan just to remove that the pipe. So it doesn't change any of the fundamentals of the drainage or where the water is going. It's just how it's getting into that structure, just the sort of a pipe is coming into the grate.
Okay.
Next, number where are we?
For six, Roy, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Back, oh, I think a year and a half ago, we had worked in conjunction with DPW and the fire department. We had pressure tests done on the two hydrants in that location, and they were very satisfied with the results. We do not believe we need a booster pump. But we're going to verify that with our engineer very shortly. Number eight.
Right. So number eight is we on the the current plan, one of the sewer lines is in conflict or almost in conflict. Greenage lines. I spoke with GCG about it, and there's it's a very short run of sewer. And and we have the ability just to drop that one leg of it slightly just so it separates, provides a little more separation from the drain pipe. So we'll we'll do that. We're just going to drop that one leg of sewer. It's a very simple change. It doesn't care. It doesn't have a domino effect downstream. It's just the one section of pipe.
And if I could, I I do want to kind of bring us back to the booster pump concept just a little bit. And you mentioned, Roy, that you're going to look into kind of from your view of this is needed. I think that would be helpful for the board to see. And, you know, for me, it would be helpful to understand why why that is a concern here and to explore it more so that the board can make an independent assessment as to whether that's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think they're saying it's required. I think they're basically saying to us, prove to us it's not. And so we're having our consultant look at the elevations of the building, the height, et cetera. He'll come back with a report that which we're happy to share with GCG and you as well.
And I I think and I think that brings me to the earlier question, right? Like, should there be further discussion with with GCG? And this, to me, is certainly that that kind of item that, you know, I would want this to go back to them and to hear of their review of your, you know, your assessment, their assessment, so we can have a little bit more clarity. We definitely want to get this part right.
Well, I can tell you one thing, we've done many buildings, some especially of the high rise require boost of up. Majority don't. And one thing we never do is we never skimp our may need, because the last thing you need is a building full of unhappy people because they don't have water pressure.
And and I may, if I just address that as well, is we are having our consultant do that report, and we will submit that report to GCG. Not a problem.
Yeah, I assume I assume that was the comment that is what the comment response required means on that item is that they they want to hear about this.
Yeah, no.
Yep.
Who's next, Eric?
We went through number eight. So page nine, top. Yes, so I had mentioned this earlier, kind of in passing, that they want us to update our drain manhole detail to create a or to show a brick trough through the manhole, similar to what a sewer manhole would typically have. But do it also on the drainage manhole. So it's we have no problem doing that. We will update that detail.
Hope you pass something, Eric.
Think you did.
You pass something, you got to back up.
Roll up page nine.
This is the first part of it, if you would like to know what the question was.
Scroll up, Eric.
Oh, maybe. No, you're wrong. We're wrong. Go ahead. Sorry, I thought you flew by it.
Nope, this is the planting.
Landscape planting plan L1.
So.
I'm not quite sure what this is getting to, you know, working with the design review committee and with the planning board. We did increase and enhance the amount of planting throughout the whole site. So I'm not clear what this. Not sure why.
It's really saying, do we want to look at more even more planting around the loading zone? But I think we've kind of covered the whole planting in the front of the building, but I leave that up to the board.
I'm not so sure.
Is the one tree per each species, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah, and and there are comment here, it actually says the layout appears or appeared in compliance with the landscape requirement. They're just saying that the board could request additional screening if it seems necessary. But they're saying it's in compliance.
It also comments down below that we've added additional lower level elements to the entire site.
There's nothing to respond to in that one.
All right, so we'll get to the lighting, but we've corrected this issue. We dropped the poles, as I had mentioned earlier, from 20 feet to 15 feet. We've shown you the photo metrics, and we have a revised lighting plan that has significantly more fixtures.
And we'll submit that plan.
And I mean, I think the screening, the comment about additional screening for context, you know, it seems to be tied to to the parking issue. And so the way I'm visualizing this is if if you guys are seeking more parking right through the special permit, it would be good, I think, for us as a board to sort of understand the visual impact of that on on nearby residents, not only the traffic impact, obviously, is a big discussion, but but also kind of are more screenings necessary in light of what you're asking for beyond what you're proposing relative to the special permit is kind of how I view this this point. And, you know, we can certainly come back to that and get a better understanding of how does how do all those cars kind of appear from different angles to the neighbors, et cetera, who who are who appear concerned about? You know, they seem to want a barrier, if you will, of some kind. So the board is kind of in a tricky position because we're trying to create a neighborhood that is interconnected as a district and has kind of a purpose in existing. And yet we're also being asked to create those back those barriers visually and otherwise. So, you know, I think we 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 need to think a little bit about that as as a board.
Would it be helpful for us to pull up the plan? Because that area that they're referring to is right, kind of also in the commercial, right, at the commercial frontage? So that, so so putting more planting in front of where we're going to have the commercial also may not be ideal because we want to have that kind of you pull into the into the project and have a nice view of of the commercial spaces and retail spaces. Eric or Matt?
One of two, do you want to see the the perspective of the plan?
Sure. And I'll just say that we, because we are asking for a special permit for reducing proposing to provide fewer spots and technically required. I understand your comment, but maybe looking at some additional landscaping as a to impact that or to help them.
To understand what the the terminology of the loading area perpendicular to the main driveway, that seems to be the the area they're pointing out as as primary concern. So are we bringing that up?
Yep, I'm getting that right now.
Okay, great.
All right, can you see that? Or is that only on mine?
You can see it now. Can you zoom in a little, Eric?
Yep, you're on the loading area. We'll get there. I'm gonna just zoom in right here.
I close the comments on them, so you don't see all the little details.
Oh, good for that. Here we are.
I think you have to scroll. You zoom out a tiny bit.
Sure.
So you want to circle the loading area and so maybe zoom in a little more so you can see where the commercial areas are.
This is where the loading area is, if you can see around that box there.
And just how would you define the loading area? What happens in that zone?
It's really a drop off area. You know, you'll pull a truck up, you'll take some supplies out, that type of thing. You'll pull up a van.
Okay, but so those things would happen at certain times of the day.
Mostly off hours, yeah.
Right, okay.
I mean, we could add more planting to that bed to the right, but I'm not quite sure what purpose that really serves.
There is a significant amount of planting around there between the commercial and.
Yeah, the whole front of the building is heavily planted.
I think there was just a suggestion for the board to take a look at. But we have discussed planting significantly.
Yeah, it seems like something that we'll need to take a look at when we're we're you know, looking at the design part of it. I think it makes sense to me now that they're pointing out as kind of an unusual situation where, you know, typically, maybe the loading area is hidden in back. But in this case, you know, and as in many urban areas, the commercial is actually along the street, and there is no back. So we need to take a look at that, so.
Okay, do you want to go back to the list, Eric?
And has your question been answered on this part?
I I think so. I mean, I think it's it's starting to 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 make sense, the context of it, right? So so that there is that design element that addresses the special permit element as well. So for a mixed use, what do we want that to look like in the front? So I I think this is an issue, an issue we we should discuss at some point as a board.
Yep.
The lighting.
We just went through that.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
This number one refers to the previous conditions of approval that we're going to bring up right when we're done with this document that we can run through point by point.
This goes back to MDM again, Todd.
It is the parking requirement regarding the special permit request.
Yep.
This is part.
Keep going, Eric.
Yep.
This is a.
This is regarding the pedestrian connection to Queen Isabella that we discussed.
Okay.
Number six.
The next one there is regarding confirmatory test pit again. So same comment again. No problem on that. Those are resolved.
Keep going. Okay, let's stop.
Right, so GCG recommends calling out catch basin grates be inspected and cleaned four times a year. So they, so we have an operation and maintenance plan that was submitted as part of this application package. And it calls for cleaning the catch bases four times a year, but not specifically cleaning the grates. So they had this comment in their first letter, and I didn't I didn't realize they were making a distinction on the grates versus the sumps of the catch basins. So basically, our response was that we have an ONM that says four times a year. But in talking with them now, they're they want us to specifically say to clean the grates off as well, four times a year. So no problem. We'll we'll update the ONM plan to specifically say that.
I assume that's just so the grates actually are clear. And you don't have that an empty sump, but a clogged grate that nothing can actually get into the sump anymore.
Right, they're useless if the grate is clogged. So it is critical. I mean, the reality is when you clean the basin, you take the grate off, it's going to get cleaned.
Common sense, but putting in writing.
Yeah. That's easy enough to do.
Especially in the fall when you're falling leaves and things like that.
Yep.
Okay, this gets back to the whole basin art concept.
The second half of that pertains to that offsite downstream basin, which we've talked about. Let's see. And then number seven is the additional soil test pit again. No problem there. That's it. So do you want to go back now to those conditions?
Eric, can you pull up the conditions of approval that were from the previous, I think, 2007 site plan approval?
Will do.
Is there any other questions from the board before we go on to that other document? Any clarifications, understanding on?
I mean, I think we just need to be clear as a board what we're going back to GCG for and what we need. So that, you know, it sounds like there's at least one item that's kind of required, and then we as a board can decide to get to get their input on other items as well. So maybe, Trish, at some point, we can have that discussion.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think I think in for many of these, there's kind of saying the ball is in our court, like, what what do we, the planning board, want to do about particular items? Other things that there was, you know, the one that they they wanted a response. But other things, I think they're leaving. Hey, this is our comment about it, planning board, what do you think? So we can, we will obviously go back to those in in the discussion of all this is kind of really just informational to for us to understand all these comments right now.
And and we will have Matt update the plans and send them over to GCG as well. Just so they have updated plans with all the things that we've agreed to.
Okay.
So we're going to bring up the 15 points.
I do have a comment, and maybe it's it's sort of related to the next one. But the last time we met, I asked a question about relating how the approved, you know, phase seven rate, the other site conditions. The wildwood mix use overlay in the covenant all work together. And I believe the way we left that Peter was going to get something from town council on that. And I haven't seen anything, so I think that's related to this next thing. So I don't know, I don't have to discuss it now, but I did want to make sure. Talk about that because I don't not sure I understand how that all works together.
Yes, Kate, so I've I'm town council is not in the office right now this week, leading up, and so it's hard to get to follow up with her on those comments. But I I will do that. So so in so directly, you're looking for the relationship of a covenant to this project?
Well, I believe based on GCG comments, they believe some of the previous approval is relative. I I'm not qualified to say. I believe the covenant is relative. And I don't know. I believe the covenant always takes precedent, but I do not know that for sure. And then related to the wildwood mixes over.
Okay, I can I can try to get a response, and I can reach out to you offline to to make sure I'm asking the right questions. But yes, this this project has been reviewed by council, you know, for the last year. And obviously, the coven is a big, the covenant is a big part of it. And I think part of the the next step right now, and I think Mr. McDowell's team is is trying to bring up the condition from the 07 approval. Is that correct, Mr. McDowell?
Yes, Peter, before we get started, Peter, before we get started on that, those conditions, and we're gonna we're gonna go through them, but those conditions were really for another project, not for this project. And some of them may be germane to this project, and some definitely are not. So we thought it would be easier and make more sense if we literally could respond to each one of them. And hopefully, the board will agree with the approach we've taken. So Todd, do you want to watch through this? Do you want me to do?
I'm happy to. I'm happy to do that. And and as Roy mentioned, that, yes.
Can I just to to preface this or to set the table per se, right, for the planning board, is that this phase, which is some, sometimes it's known as phase seven, sometimes it's known as phase three. However, this phase and mixed use development originally was permitted back in 2005, 2006. And then it was the last approval that was granted to the FAFR company was in 2007. So on that site plan, which was signed by the planning board, there was a list of conditions which were part of the which were part of the planning board's conditions, right? And so the McDowell company, you know, based on development is going to run through a list of conditions that were taken from. that were taken from that cover sheet of the approved plans back in two thousand and seven. Since then, obviously, this project, there's there's a stop at the Z E A, which we've already covered. And then of the Faffler Company built half of the the commercial space and then continued on from that point, building up the rest of the condos. So at this point, what we're reviewing now is the conditions from the last approved plan of this phase, which were granted back in two thousand and seven.
Then Peter, as a result of this approval, is that when that particular commercial space was built, the one that's in front of the development currently?
So after this approval, right? I would say no. No.
So that already exists, it was, so that building, the building that's currently there, the one that would come down as part of this new project was built before this document?
I believe was built after this document.
After this document, got it. So for example, where it says no restaurants are allowed, that is why we would not see a restaurant in that building today.
I, you know, and I I don't know the right answer to that question. I I was a heat here, you know, so this was approved, the last approval for this mixed use development was in oh seven. Then according to the covenant, the Faffler had to build half of the the mixed use space. And then in two thousand and eight, he appeals a building commissioner decision, right? Because he, because he built half of the, the half of the total amount of quadplexes he could, right? And then he was denied a building application. He goes to the Z B A and the Z B A makes a ruling that says you have to build half of the commercial, the approved commercial space according to the the plan in oh seven before you can continue on with the remaining quadplexes.
Right, and when he, yeah, and I mean, all I need to understand, and this could be a council question, is when he builds it, right? Because that actually existed and was built. Whether these conditions were part of that kind of reality status quo in the ground. And the reason I ask is I'm trying to understand the intentions of our town at that point, which we're trying to honor, right? As far as the covenant is concerned, so this document is kind of, this goes to Kate's question as well. How does this document relate to the covenant? And what is the reality on the ground for us? Because essentially, what we're doing is we're physically removing a building that that already exists. And if that building existed with these conditions, we have to figure out as a board, what's the relevance of these conditions?
Okay.
Right?
I I I fully understand what you're saying, yes. I do not believe that he, what, yes, I understand what you're saying. In my eyes, that he does not build to the permit that was granted in oh seven. So therefore, I don't know how these conditions would be applied to the the re temp, the restructures that exist today.
Yeah, and if we don't know, if we don't know the answer to that as a board, then I'm very happy to kind of walk through these. But to me, it becomes kind of a mystery as to what the relevance of these is, other than kind of brainstorming, hey, are they even relevant?
So, yeah, we're just, we're just, we're talking about, and and we have to obviously talk to the council to make sure, you know, and ask the question from the, what are the the relevancy of the conditions from two thousand and seven on the current project today?
Yes, let's, let's walk through them, so at least we have that information. Lisa will be coming back in town, and then we can get town council to weigh in on what things are coming into into the sphere of this project, so.
I think that'd be helpful, and I also think as we go through them, you'll see where some don't make any sense for our project and some we're going to agree to, because in fact, they do make sense. And Peter, I thought these conditions were for the plan for the hundred and forty apartments or condos he wanted to build in this site, not for for what you mentioned previously.
Roy, may I just add to that? This was for those, that larger mixed use with condos apartment project, and and we kind of view these as just conditions of that site plan approval, just as you condition any site plan approval you do. And that's specifically to that plan, as you'll see as we go through this, some are very detailed onto providing a breezeway for a fire engine to go over a drain easement, which is no longer relevant, because we're not building on top of a drainage, a drainage line at this point. But some of them, you know, make good sense, and we're happy to have them as conditions in in this project as well. Some, obviously, as I'll run through it, don't make sense to this project, because they're not, they're not relevant.
Good, why don't we start with number two, Todd?
Well, number one, we can agree with. Number two, we believe this was completed. We've reached out to the Faffler Company to to confirm this, and we've reached out to, I believe, some of the D P W to discuss this as well, to make sure that this this was completed. We don't have a clear answer yet, but we believe that was done as later phases of the project move forward of the condo townhomes. Number three, we we've no problem with abiding by those order conditions. We've, we read through them, we we have a whole copy of the order of conditions, and that was mostly relating towards when they were going to build out the large basin across the street. They, that was actually built after this site plan approval, so a lot of those order conditions had to do with that basin being built. The, number four, we we're actually putting together that report with the water pressure to to show you that that the we have enough water pressure at these buildings, and we don't require a booster pump, but we don't believe we will, but we'll have that report tell us one way or the other. The restaurants, this was a condition of the site plan approval, just because if they were concerned about the amount of traffic or parking or whatever it might be. We don't have a problem coming back to, we we don't anticipate a restaurant going in. But if we have one, we're happy to come back to the planning board to get their sign up on that. Number six, again, this is something I I just mentioned, where they are creating the seventeen foot wide kind of breezeways through the, under the building that have to be at least fourteen and a half feet high to get a fire truck through the building, because they were building on top of these drain lines, which we're now building our entire building behind them. If we could show you the plan that has all the building behind those easements that are towards the front of the site along Chestnut. Let's see. We have, see, planning board even planned, well, those those drain lines have been done, and we can show you those easements are, have been in place for a long time now, along the front of the property along Chestnut Street, and that's, I believe, those are shown on the A and R as well. We have no problem with the, the salt. Sorry, the, where am I? Twenty foot paid service, salt tolerant plants, we have no problem doing that, and I believe when we, Roy, you talked to our landscape architect, and we meet those requirements. Regarding the signage, we have no problem coming back for materials and approval on signage to the planning board. The, I I think M D M in their most recent most recent reports have shown that this this intersection is operating as intended. I know they they've put together just a quick paragraph right up for us, we can submit that to the board as well, along with the photometric plan and some of the other information we're putting together. The intersection, this was, this, these stop signs are there, and they exist currently. This next one, we agree to comply with this as it's required for all, you know, precast walls that are over four feet tall, we will have them professionally engineered and will submit those plans to the planning board. This other one, let's see. The drainage line, again, we're not building our building to conflict with that drainage line. It's, we're building our entire building behind, so it's not applicable to our proposed plan. And that's the same thing with the fourteenth point. Regarding the fifteenth point, Matt, do you just want to, I I know you kind of addressed this in all your new plans with GCG, correct?
Right, so this just goes back to what I went through earlier and and their initial peer review letter talking about, you know, basically having the proposed groundwater recharge system on this site stand on its own and not rely on other previous phases of the development and and this infrastructure that was put in for those previous phases. So the updates that we've made to the plan with our most recent response to the peer review on July first addresses condition number fifteen.
And I would also mention that when condition fifteen is put in that site plan approval, it was also to make sure, because the attention base and across Queen Isabella hadn't been built yet, so they wanted to make sure that they were covered by putting that as a condition in their site plan approval. And then number sixteen, this is a letter that was sent just regarding their dumpsters, they had open air dumpsters, and they wanted to make sure that they were fenced in and not visible to the street. We're providing entire building where our dumpsters will be enclosed and and certainly not visible.
So I I think the board will note that whatever seems to be relevant to our project, we're more than willing to do. And there's a few items that really aren't germane to our project that makes no sense in the current environment, so I'm hoping that satisfies you on that.
Yeah, and these can all just be put in as conditions of site plan approval, just as they were on the previous site plan. And I think that addresses really all of GCG's letter. Is there anything else the board like us to go over this evening?
I think there were just a few new. Were there a few new visuals, a few new views or perspectives that you were, that you had? Am I business mistaken on that?
I would ask Matt Marata. Matt, are you with us?
Good evening, Matt Marata with Icon Architecture. The only thing that we changed was the wood color on the second building in lieu of the dark color, we agreed with comments from the board that were mentioned last time. And so that it was just updating all the elevations and perspectives.
We could run through those if the board likes, or submit them as part of a that package we're putting together.
Um, I will, why don't we, why don't we run through them quickly if you have them, if you have them available, just so that we're all on the same page?
Erica, you gonna bring those up?
I have made Matt a co-host.
I don't actually have this.
Oh, Eric, you are already a co-host.
Where are we going, Matt?
Just go straight to the perspectives, Eric. So nothing changed on these, it's really on the second, the further piece of the building to where we have our residential entry, so Eric, you can kind of cycle through to just building two stuff. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going, another building, other building, you're going.
Okay.
Right there. So this, this previously, we had illustrated this building with the darker wood. We agreed with a comment that was made with be careful with the colors and the changing materials, that we don't get too busy. So we did change this building back to just the lighter wood tone color.
Is there a view that you've just gone through kind of quickly here that kind of shows that loading area that we talked about earlier, when the front of the building?
Eric, if you go to one of the frontal. Right there.
Yes, over to the right.
Okay.
Can you zoom in on that, Eric? Yeah, it's right there. That gray area.
Got it, I see, yep, that kind of, okay. I think you know, maybe if you can also just submit a view kind of focused, not saying needed today, but like, you know, focused in on that area from a couple's perspectives. Here, you know, obviously, it's kind of cut off, just so that we can really fully understand what GCG's concern is for our, for our discussions.
Are there any others that showed, Eric?
There may be one other, which is.
Be in the, it will be one of the first ones.
Can you show us the corner one again?
I can zoom in on this one. This actually might be the best one to show it. Here we go. So this is the extent of it, showing it from the street.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be nice to see it kind of. I don't know, without the cars, or, you know, it's really, it's kind of hard to get, the the space is always clipped off, just to be able to understand what they're talking about. But again, yeah, just submit them, you know, and.
I mean, I, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, okay, so let's say that there's a lot more trees that make the commercial space less visible. Is there a way to add that tree cover, but yet have signage or some kind of visibility as far as what businesses there are that are there? So I don't know if we, if we want as a board to kind of think about that and maybe ask for a couple of visuals of how would this commercial space be showcased if we did have more trees, you know, more cover, more, more kind of more of a green look, if you will, to this.
If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to call C G, G C G and ask them what they're thinking here. Because it might be good to have a conversation, because maybe it's they're thinking this rather than that, and it'd be helpful if you don't mind my talking to them.
I mean, I think that that's always great. I I think kind of you know, the board's view may be worthwhile to explore too. And you know, it's not really my individual thought, it's just more for the board to think about, and you know, what is the vision, if you will, that that the town had for the Wildwood District, and what is the you know, what is that? How does that look? So I think today, we're really focused on the technical elements of the report, and I don't want to totally go off, off, but I'm just looking at this particular view, and I and I think it's worth exploring what what that's supposed to be.
Yeah, I think it's, it's always fine if you, obviously, if you want to talk to GCG. About, about any of their their questions. But I think this is, I think they have put this out there as kind of, this is a, this is a design question and a question for the board about which way we want to go with it. So, so that's fine, I have no problem with gathering information. But, but if those, a couple of views can be you know, be provided, like, minus cars and really kind of focusing on that space versus.
I'll pull in to the, more to the drive, so everything's in the foregrounds out of the way.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a hard space to capture, I think, but it would just, it would just make our discussion easier, so. But okay, so all of that information is I appreciate the time and meticulous kind of conversation, kind of going through these points with us, so that we can see both what's major and what's minor here. Are there, are there any questions from the board? I think people have kind of been jumping in when they had questions, but are there any questions from the board or or a suggestion of anything we want to discuss tonight specifically regarding this this project and and the things that GCG has talked about?
I'm kind of curious with that missing test bit for the groundwater infiltration, what could change, stop information that you get from that?
Great question, yep. So what can change on something like that is the soil texture, the material's different than the the material that we thought would be there, based on the the soil data that we had. The soil data that we do have, though, shows that the material is consistent. And so that is always possibility, you don't know until you do the test fit right in that spot, but we're not, we don't have a high concern about that. The other thing that could change besides the, what material is there, is the depth to groundwater. But similarly, we're not concerned with that because the test pit that we do have near the system, but off to the side, is actually in, it's in an area closer to the, so there's a lot of topography going on on this site, right, and the where we did the test, it's actually closer, kind of more into the the base of the hill. So one would expect that groundwater, if anything, would be higher where we did the test bit than where the actual system is going, but we based the design of the system on the groundwater level we saw at the test bit, so. I feel confident that we're actually going to find groundwater lower than we assumed, which is a good thing, that that's, that's good.
Matt, now, if you were to come into, sorry to interrupt, if you were Matt, now, if you were to come into, sorry to interrupt, if you were to find either of those things, what would really change is your system might grow a little bit bigger, or it just might be shallower and wider, it would really just, it would just change the mechanics of the layout, it wouldn't really be the end of the world.
And that's something that um GCG and I had discussed because um, in a situation like this, if, if there's, if it's truly unknown and you don't have any data or the test, you know, you have data, but it's not in a great location relative to where you have the system proposed. Um, it could be a little risky, you know, to, to rely on a confirmatory test bit, but um, we, we talked it through and uh we're both in agreement that um, it's, this is really just to, to close the loop on it and we're really not concerned that we're going to run into an issue. However, um, if for some reason groundwater was a little higher than expected um, or soil was a little different than expected, we do have room to uh play with the mechanics of the system to make, you know, either make it a shower, but broader system to provide the same you know, the, the same uh effect and the, the same function as, as we have now, um, so.
Matt, we should make it clear to the board, we did many test pits. It's just, it's just not in this particular spot because there's a building there. So we have good empirical evidence of what's on the site by the many pits that we did.
Right. Yeah, this is not a case where we just don't want to go out and do test pits, we just physically can't do a test pit in this location right now because of what's out there. You know, when, when we saw what was out there, we, we said, there's no way we're digging here, I mean, there's utilities everywhere. Pavement, we're not doing it, so um, we can't do it right now, um, and that's, that's the reason for um for, for that condition.
Now, I, I believe that would have done it now if you could in the middle of a drought, it could only help you, but um I just wanted to make sure that you have the space to expand, should get thrown a curveball there. Um, the other test bits, is that site mostly undisturbed material there, virgin material, or is this site a fill? I don't, I don't know the historic use of this area.
It's really a combination of both. There are some areas where it's virgin, the summer is with as you probably remember, Rosenfeld Concrete had a facility here at one time. So some areas, they actually cut the grade down, there's some they raised the grade a bit, but I would say on balance, most of it's virgin, but there were some areas that have been filled.
And, and the, and just to piggyback on that, the, where the system is going is in an area of that is not filled. Um, so the bottom of the system will be on uh, you know, into virgin material, which is what you want with system. You don't want to put a system like this overfill typically, and that wouldn't be the case here.
Okay, and no, no high ledge in that part of town, like elsewhere than than your other test bits.
No, because it's on the low side of the site, we don't have to contend with any high ledge or anything like that, so that, that is another factor. And actually, that's a good, that's another factor that could change in a, in a confirmatory test bit, but because we're on the low side of the site and actually where the system is, is lower than where we did the test bit. Um, and there's infrastructure there already, we don't anticipate that that's going to be an issue at all.
Any other comments from the planning board? All right, um, I just have, just would like to get some general feedback from the board because parking is one of the things that are going to be popping up in our discussion of, of projects. Um, is the, does anyone have any, um, we're not taking a vote on it today or anything, but the, um, the idea of having shared spaces with the commercial and the residential, does anyone have any um, strong feelings about that, about that use? GCG seems to believe that it is adequate. Um, the applicant has talked about limiting um limited commercial use um during uh hours when people would be home. Um, so that, uh, you know, maybe a reason not to have a late night restaurant there to compete with the residential spaces. But are there any comments from the board on parking, which is kind of popped in here and there, and we've never really stopped to discuss it in any detail.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we do need to discuss the parking element, right? Where there's a special permit pending, and I think we need to be very clear as to what we're doing with that, but I, I, you know, I don't know if, if you want to, do you want to have that full discussion today, Trisha? I'm not.
No, like, I, okay. I guess I'm, I guess I'm wondering if there are questions about it that we want the applicant to address, then we should make those known now, not um as we get further down the road. Um, so um my um my take on it is that especially when we look towards a sustainability point of view, shared spaces is great. Um, and that uh a reduction in, in, in parking spaces is usually what um was always what sustainability is looking for. So I would rather that parking lot be very um very efficiently used instead of having a lot of empty spaces. So um, but I'm wondering what the, what the rest of the board rest, in general, except not taking a vote on this tonight, but in general, if there's any concerns that we want to um give to the applicants, that they could address them or any information we would like to gather, so that they could present them that as well, so. If there's data they can show about the parking spaces, more information, then, then let's make sure we, we have that. If there's not, then there's not, I mean, if there's, I think, I think you presented some parking information before, and maybe it would be just good to take another look at that, have it on hand, make sure it's up to date. So that we have, we have that information in front of us clearly.
Well, I, I was thinking, you know, it's hard for me to kind of to comment because we've had so many continuances, I feel like this is, this has been discussed for almost a year or more so. Um, and so, you know, one thing I was going to suggest is maybe at some point, we, we have a little recap of kind of, what did we talk about six months ago that we have now put away where it's hard for me to even remember? Um, right, what, what was discussed and, and where we are, and some of that data point may need to be updated. Um, so that we understand better where we are.
Well, we can have MDM, our traffic consultant, come to the next meeting and talk specifically about the issue of shared parking, which we think is a great idea, especially if we're not going to have any late night commercial uses. We're not putting in park, a pavement impervious area for the sake of having it where people that are working in the day, some of those spaces get used for commercial use, so they're gone in the evening, people come home, it makes a lot of sense, and they can have the the very specific data which we'll give to the board on why that makes a lot of sense.
And, and I would actually, if, if you don't mind, just putting together a brief memo, one, one page, just of the, so we can have the data in front of it, in front of us um, and read it in advance versus, versus having it presented.
Is this the traffic, traffic data you're referring to, the parking?
More about the parking, you know, to, about, you know, typically there'd be this many spots, but this many are shared spots. This is the size of our parking, this is what we're asking for, this is our experience in other projects, that type of, that type of data for us.
We, we have those slides, we have those slides put together, um, I don't know if we have them, or two of them available, you can just show them right now. We, we, do you want to show the parking slides?
I think we've had them before, I'd rather have it something on paper that I can have in front of me in the book.
Let's, let's get it to them on paper.
We, we can uh email it out.
I, I definitely know it is come, it come up in slides, but versus having it with all the data in front of us is, is kind of what I'm, what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I guess I'm suggesting, and it's up to you, Trisha's chair, is, is maybe it's worthwhile because we've kind of split this project up into these chunks. Maybe at some point, it's time to reunite the chunks and have, have a kind of a big picture presentation of what were all the categorical issues we've covered, where are we, what needs to be updated? How do we start to kind of see this all together? Um, I, I feel like we're disconnecting a little bit with our discussions and we're not necessarily tracking where we are with each topic, so things are starting to get lost in the translation, at least for me.
Are the, are the drawings up, up to date? Uh, you know, the, the package that's been submitted, is that I think you mentioned getting a few things up to date, so the package is fully integrated, is, is that right?
What we'll do first of the week, Matt will update his plans relative, Matt Leidner, relative to everything with GCG. Uh, Matt Marata will do the same, we'll put together a complete package early next week. We'll submit that to Peter and we'll also send you the parking data and the charts and whatever we have for information, so you have everything. And then hopefully at the next meeting, we can go through all of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, like, it's kind of going over all of it in, in more of a big picture way.
Yeah, and it, listen, it could, it could be, it could be kind of a brainstorming that we as a board need to have, or some, what are some of the issues about this project that are on individual members' minds that we need to kind of piece together, right? So you know, for me, I, I remember we had some discussion about the bus shelter, right? Kind of where are we? Um, we had some discussion about either a crosswalk or some kind of connection to the trail, where are we? We had some discussion about um, you know, s- what might work for certain green elements, I think there was a massive piece of a presentation that dealt with that. You know, what's the update, if anything? Um, we talked about now we've started talking about design and in kind of the, the, you know, some of the elements of design, we talked about colors. We've started talking about landscaping, I feel like there's a disconnect there, the two have to kind of start connecting. Um, I'm sure other board members are thinking about other things, I just feel like we, we need to start having presentations that you know, we're not separating these issues, we're, we're starting to see them all together.
What I would like to start doing in, in terms of these, uh, where we go from here and now that the engineering is coming together, and like you said, there are these pieces, is to start looking at this project specifically regarding the criteria for the Wildwood District. Criteria by criteria, so instead of just kind of getting another, we could get an overview of the project first, but then to say, okay, for the board to say, here, this is criteria one. This is, we need, you know, these are the things we talked about, do with that criteria. What do we think is missing, or what hasn't been resolved? You know, what is happening with that crossing, what is happening with the dog park? Those things about connection that, um, you know, and then going on to criteria two, you know, and deciding what's working well, what's not working well. Um, and, and that way we can, we can make sure all these pieces are kind of coming together.
I think that's a great plan. I'm not sure we'll be ready as a board to tackle the criteria until we're reminded, at least I mean, I, I, you know, to go back a year or nine months and re-watch those things is going to be difficult for us as a board. So I think, you know, maybe maybe you start off with a summary of these big points and small points, um, and then start with a criteria.
I, I think it is talking about the, you know, having, having the applicant give a presentation again about the the project as a whole, here's the site plan, here's how it relates to the community. Here's our you know, here's the design concept, here's what we were thinking about with colors, here's the approach. But really kind of, it, it's a big picture thing, but now has these elements woven into it that we have talked about. Um, and, uh, and then it's for us to call out if, if something's missing that, that we talked about, that isn't, that isn't there. Um, but, but after that presentation, um, then I think it's, it's about going and, and let's get serious about these criteria and what's working and, and not working in people's minds, because their criteria are floating out there, but we've never actually yet um appropriately started going through them one by one and seeing if they're being met or if they're not being met. So, and I would encourage the applicant too, to take another look at those and um so that you know what we're going to be talking about.
And if I could, I also would love to get a sense from the applicant of what you know, what's, what's your vision as to when we will issue a decision, kind of, because I, I'm starting to feel like we keep kind of having, you know, we're continuing, we're kind of continuously discussing it. And I for one think that it's time to start understanding kind of what's the end goal, what timeframe are we aiming for to start this project? And, um, and how do we get to a place where there's a decision, right?
I'm glad you asked that question. Um, we were hoping by the end of August to have a decision from you, because our, our, our time with Faford is actually running out in our purchase and sales agreement. And we've extended it with them two or three times already. And I know they're getting a little frustrated how long it's taken. And, you know, we know it's a big decision for the board, but at the same time, what I'm hoping is when we come back to the next meeting, that we bring the updated architectural, the updated stormwater, the updated uh landscape plans and walk through this, walk through the MDM and why we think the special permit makes a lot of sense in the parking. And hopefully, as we go through all that, if there are any outstanding issues, hopefully not, if there are, we discuss those, and hopefully we can finalize that at the next meeting. That would be our, our ideal goal.
And I think that's helpful, you know, when I think about the project, it's a big project and it's got these kind of layers of complexity, there's a covenant. Right, there's the, the commercial element that you've made movement on for sure. Um, we've got to think about the special permit and kind of the the variance, if you will, from the bylaw that you want us to take. And then there's this sort of negotiables, including affordability and it all, those are big things um, that kind of all fit together, at least in my mind. And I think the sooner we start having that conversation, the better, and, and the, the technical division of topics is extremely helpful. But now it's time to pull it all together. Um, that's kind of where I'm at, I feel like I'm getting anxious in how much time we're taking and that we're losing sight of key details because we're, we're taking so long.
No, this is what I'm, this is why we're going to go back to the criteria, because the planning board is obligated to look at the criteria. And that is why we're going to look at those first, and then the decision will fall after those cra- those precise criteria have been discussed. So if we can prepare for that next time, then we will be ready to, I would say that the planning board should be ready to begin that discussion on the specific criteria that we're being asked to evaluate. So, and those are in the bylaws that everyone should review.
Okay, we'll get that all put together for our next meeting.
All right. Great.
Do we have any sense um of the whole, like um, covenant and how that works, because I do, my reading of that, I do have concerns and I, and I'm with Anna, like we don't want to uh hold this up, but I, I just, we haven't, I haven't gotten that since we asked the last time we talked about this project, so.
I will tell you, we've gone over with town council and with our council and ourselves very, very detailed, and we've, we've fallen compliance with the covenant. And we, you can have that confirmed by town council, Peter. I think you're on mute, Peter.
Yeah, excuse me, yes, I will have that uh confirmed, town council.
And I, I, I mean, you know, I, I'll say that part of it is we've had new members since this project started, right? Um, I remember we had a different, different council for the applicant when the project started. We had deep discussions with prior council, then, you know, new, new applicant council came in. Um, I know the applicant has had discussions with town council, town council has come to us, the project has changed, it's evolved. So I think, again, I think including including our town council's view on some of these issues now would be a good summary for us, um, but it sounds like we're, we're all in agreement that it's time to start piecing it all together.
Yeah.
We would much appreciate that.
That is the plan. So at this point, I am going to I see two hands raised that have had the hands, I'm going to order, I'm going to open up to very brief public comments for people who have been waiting. And, um, and then we will go on to the next hearing, so Kathy, you have hand, your hand up, I'm not sure if if you had a comment on this, or I would just ask everyone to be brief.
I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. Um, but I have a couple of questions, what are the stormwater stuff? Is that going to handle a one hundred year storm, or what's the size of the storm that's going to handle?
Um, if, if I may, I can. Yes, the system has been designed to handle up to and including the one hundred year storm. And the very detailed stormwater report that's been submitted as part of the application includes calculations. Uh, that, and that, that is what's been reviewed by GCG.
Oh, how many inches of rain is that in an hour?
Yeah, I don't want to go into too much detail at this when it is included in the report, so these are general questions.
Well, I'm asking, since he, he knows and it's an important question, they got nine inches of rain.
And all right, I'll allow it, but keep it brief.
Nope.
The question is how many inches an hour?
Yes.
The, the system is designed as a twenty-four hour storm that is designed for. And it's, I don't have it in front of me, it's, it's roughly eight to nine inches in that range.
Okay, that's great. I was told by another applicant earlier this year, it was five to six inches, so that's.
No, that's not, that is not what the system, no, that's the rainfall rate is in the eight, eight, between eight and nine inches.
Okay, great. Um, how about the snow storage area? Um, we've We've asked a couple of times for that to be different than that rip rap slope in the back.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand the question.
So, previous meetings, Mr. McDowell. Design Review Committee has asked you questions about the rip rap slope in the back.
Yes.
Changing that so it looks similar. To what they do at the Stop and Shop on Temple Street in Framingham that's on the corner of Route nine and Temple Street. And they have a sunken area along a road that's bordered with trees on both the parking lot side and the sidewalk side. I don't know how many feet down it is, but I couldn't figure out where they had this lower area there for years until I suddenly realized there was. Snow stored in it one day and it was a giant pile of snow. And that would look much better than a rip rap slope.
No, that, so if I may answer that as well or address that. That's a good question. So that does not, so Massachusetts DEP has a snow storage. Policy that we need to adhere to and the policy is that. Areas that you store snow within. The, the idea is that it is beneficial and encouraged that. Those areas, when the snow melts, the water, the runoff, or the meltwater from the snow runs through the stormwater system. And gets the benefit of the treatment of the storm system. So I'm not familiar with the exact location, that stop and shop that you're referring to and what that looks like, but. If there's a depression in the ground that they push snow into. That would not meet the current storm, uh, snow management policy. So what we're proposing is that back edge of the project, which. There's a rip rap slope, there's some landscape or vegetated area. That the snow be pushed there, the meltwater will then run through and get the benefit of the entire treatment. System and infiltration system. That's being proposed. So that, that's sort of the rationale behind that.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, there's a proper treatment system at Stop and Shop.
Do you have any other questions, Kathy? Cause.
Yeah, I'm going through my notes here for a minute.
Yeah, but I, I think we're not going to cover everything from design review in, in this, in this meeting. So we will, we will be revisiting those, but this may not be the time or the place to go through your whole list. I do encourage the applicant to look at, to revisit the list from the design review committee. Of the documents they had asked for so that we can also, to make sure, I know, I know some of them have already been. Provided such as the photo metrics, but to make sure all those items are available for everyone's review. And if you don't have them, Peter has that list.
Tricia, I'll make my comments at another meeting.
All right. All right, Mark, do you want to unmute?
I almost forgot how to. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mark the Sony 49 Hawthorne Road. I just, I'd just like to say. War and peace with CCG was a whole lot more interested in shorter than what we're through just now. And. I would like to say what was in red. Was real with, well read. And I wanted to just put down. When you do have these. Marathon one subject meetings. It would be good to know that you're not going to shut out. The comments after. But here in front of the board, yes, it's supposed to be that way, but. After almost an hour forty-five minutes, there's got to be another way out. I got no question. I was real frustrated because it took so long to get through, get through this part.
Yeah, I, I understand this engineering part is get a little tedious, but it's very detailed information. And everyone, including the board, is trying to understand all of it. So it does take a lot of time and there were members of the board even that didn't have any questions and are just trying to absorb the information. So I understand it's frustrating, but for the, the planning board, we have a whole nother public hearing to do yet tonight. So. There'll be another opportunity for public comment. Last comment, Joan, can you unmute?
Yes, I have a very quick question. It's probably been answered before and I apologize because I was not, was not at those meetings. The buildings are, appear to be four stories high and I thought that our ruling was thirty, thirty-eight feet. And I was wondering why that would be or is there special zoning here? Thank you.
Yeah, Joan, that thirty-eight foot is for the downtown zoning area. But it, it, which is a different, a different district. This is the Wildwood District. And so there's a different part of the bylaws that applies to this area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. There's any other questions from the board? I will take them. Otherwise, I think we need to, I think the applicant is clear about what we need to, to go forward and discuss, discuss these things. Now that we have all this information in, in more detail and using the, using the criteria from bylaws. So. Peter, where are we looking to continue this to?
So I would like to continue this to August 11th if possible. We have a couple of big hearings coming up on the 25th, which is going to be the second meeting in August. So I think if we can get as far as long, as, as far as we can with this on the 11th, I think it will be both for the board and the applicants. Best interest. So. If I could and, and obviously in agreement with the applicant, I think we should continue this to August 11th.
Okay, I will make a motion to continue the 100 Chestnut Street. Public hearing until Thursday, August 11th at seven fifteen. And a roll call vote.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, aye.
I'm a client, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is. Five zero zero, we will see you on August 11th.
Thank you.
Can I get that email, pal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Could I interrupt for one second before Anna leaves?
Sure.
Marcelo's not there, correct?
Marcelo's not here this evening, yeah.
All right, I was already down to four members. If he doesn't show up tonight, we're down to three members. On mine because he already missed a previous meeting. Yeah. He already missed a meeting earlier, so he can't miss two, my understanding on the special permit. So I'm going to have to request an extension.
Peter, is that, is that where you're?
I, I, I. I did not have that absentee marked down, but Mr. Stevens, I think that the best move is to play a precautionary role. And, and obviously continue from tonight. And then go from there. But if we do. The Mullen Rule affidavit only covers one of this meeting. So therefore you, you're not allowed to miss two. Then, then Kate is not a voting member of the board on this one. So. We are down, but we would only, we would lose the forum as needed for the special.
This is for five oh one pond, right?
Yep, and obviously you're, you're accused.
Yeah.
Kevin's a member. Kate joined the board after.
Gotcha, I understand.
So therefore. I think it's probably in the best interest of both the applicant and the, and the planning board that will continue this. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Stevens.
That's fine. These things happen.
So obviously Mr. Stevens has made a request to continue this to August 11th. Does anyone in the board have any questions, concerns about that?
Nope. Does everyone understand why this is happening?
So I, I'm not commenting on the five oh one pond project at all, but I think as a board, we may want to think about how to track absentees in general.
I think it typically is tracked. It just went, just with all, have her busy in summer vacation. This one just, just slipped through. So, yeah, it is tracked. So.
Do I track it? Sorry.
Okay, gotcha.
But yeah. I agree. I do now remember myself doing this one.
Kate, I hate to throw you under the bus, but as our clerk, maybe you can help us out. For keeping track when we're, when we're gone. We do it so rarely anyway.
Yeah, it's fine.
I, I think it, it should, Ken or she remain with, with Peter and Emma. They already have this thing going. Yeah, I don't want to lay too much on, on Kate's schedule. We, we're going to keep dumping things on her.
Oh, no, and I meant more like as a second person to help out. But anyway, it's, it's.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Stevens for.
And I will second that. So we will be continuing to August 11th again at seven fifteen.
To get a vote and I'll abstain, obviously.
We need to roll call vote, starting with Deepa. And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we will continue that with our apologies, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, please email me in writing and then I can file that with the town clerk.
We will.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you.
We would not have allowed Marcelo to go on vacation. That would have been the consequence here.
Things like this happen.
So, summer is. Hard. Okay. All right. So I guess that leaves a little bit of, again, unexpected time for. Some items that we do. Need to review. The next on the agenda is the 12 Pond Street review of exterior colors. Oh, and.
I have to.
Something on this one.
Yes. Yeah, I'll be leaving in the next minute to come back.
I will, Kate, one minute, let me double check before you leave, but I have your, your cell number. I do, and I will text you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are down to. Three of us though, right? Six members, we have three left. I, I still, is it, is still worth taking a, a look at?
Peter?
I think so.
I think so too.
I think so too.
If, if Deepa wasn't here, I would, I would say no because, you know, but. I don't know, we have, I was thinking we had three.
We have four. This one's been with us for a while.
Yeah.
You and Deepa have been the common threads on this application. So it, and it's really not an app, it's not an open hearing. It's a, obviously it's a ongoing. Conversation in regards to that decision.
Yeah.
Which was me twenty-one times ago. And I know the applicants, the patient. And, and has submitted a couple of rendering, reviser.
So. Given that we're talking about 12 Pond Street, we, we did receive one. I'm sure, one letter about 12 Pond Street that actually is not relevant to the discussion here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter. That's about kind of another matter.
That's another matter that kind of came through late today. And, and. And I haven't had time to speak with you about it, but yes, that's a different matter and. And really that matter will be, you know, I, I have not been called out for a final inspection. I've been to the site many times, however. When I do a final inspection, I, I always have the approved plans. And I go and we count everything, we count trees and parking spots and we measure. And I think what that email asked for me is to pay special attention to that area. And to make sure that, that what was promised and what was approved was actually good.
Right.
And so. When I, when I, when I come back, when I, obviously I'm not in the office right now. But when I, when I get back to Ashland, I will, I'll take a special trip out there and double check. I was out there the other day taking the pictures of, of the current structure or building. That were obviously uploaded and sent out on Friday. But I'll pay special attention to that when I, when I go to the site. And I'll make a trip out there soon as possible.
Okay. Sounds good. Peter, are you able to bring up?
Yep.
Has everyone had a chance to pick up the packets and look at the various? No. Oh.
I have not.
Okay.
I apologize for missing that.
Well.
I have looked over the attachments, obviously for today, but I have not gone to city hall to pick them up to town hall.
Okay, well, I guess it depends on how comfortable you are looking at things on screen. I mean, I think we should look.
I'm okay, I'm okay having the discussion. I don't think that prevents me from commenting. I think that where Deepa and Tricia are most familiar with this project and I was not involved in the early stages, I think that's okay. And I will make an effort to, unless we're making a decision on the spot today. If there is extra time, I'll make an effort to come in and glance at them as well.
Uh, yeah.
And if we need to make a decision without me doing that, I think that's fine too.
I'm sorry, I'm getting lost. I just want to make sure of the right ones.
Yes, I would say let's. Yeah. So, and it, it's hard because you can't bring up the photograph of the.
Do you want me to go over the current structure?
Show, if, if you have that photograph of the, of the existing front.
Yep.
I think that's the last one, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I think it's on the last page of that. There's a photograph of the existing building.
Yeah, I got it right here. Anyone see that?
Yes. So. And, and do you have pictures of the other sides? Just kind of scroll through them while I'm talking.
You know what, I have to, I, not all together in one. Oh, they are. Here we go.
Okay, yeah, so that's a, that's a good one to focus on right there for a minute, right? So. Somewhere along the line of this thing, and I, I cannot go back and understand the history of it. It was too confusing. But the colors, the colors were supposed to be approved before they went on the building. Instead, what happened is that the siding and colors went up prior to planning board review or approval. And so it has been on, I think the last time it came before, the last time we actually talked about it in planning board was. When Charlie Zamudo, the applicant was here. He was. Obviously stressed and upset with the process. And so we couldn't really go into discussion about, exactly about the colors. So he produced these, you know, eventually produced these, these renderings of different color options. After seeing them, Deepa and I went out and looked at them onsite to try to look at them in real. In real light, not, not a printout to try to understand the colors and try to understand what is the best solution for the building. Given where we are right now. So this was one of the things that we found disturbing, just kind of this. Patchwork of colors that that green area will be, be filled in with, the intention is to be filled in with red brick. So now we have four colors and four quadrants and we didn't feel that was working very well. So after looking at the different, you can go and then show the other. Show the other ones too. This is a good one to, yeah, this is a good one to note. This is the back. And what's, what's interesting to note here, and we're just so different a little bit on the renderings. Is the color of this roof is more brown than it appears in the renderings. And it kind of changes in the different light, but. The, the roof tends to look brown rather than black. So it, it's a hard balance to, because we can't change the roof color, at least without. Yeah, I think at one point we did and, and without being, it's extremely environmentally unfriendly, right? So what Deepan and I did is try to work as best we could with what is here. In order to make a good design solution for these colors. So if you flip back around to the front. What we had decided. What we have thought onsite is that the gray color and the cream color, which is the color of these towers. Really are, really are working okay. They work well together. And. And and the dormers up there are actually all white and are just trimmed out. And that was working fine, too, with the white trim. So what we were suggesting to do is really to continue that color around the rest of the, around the rest of the building, to continue the gray around the, around the band, to continue the cream at the first floor and at the vertical elements, and that the red brick would fill in the rest. That was not an option given by Mr. Zamudo, so that's the one that Deepa and I kind of typed up some notes and created the other, this other, this other option. Deepa, do you have anything to add to that? That's a long discussion about color.
No, and I think the goal here is to kind of help finish the project and the way it is and make the best use of what we have instead of having to redo the whole thing. We obviously are tied to the color of the roof here. Want to, I mean, it's, it's a nice palette. I wish there was a little more support that he had from the design team. But I think the goal here is to, let's make the best use of it and trying very hard not to make a call based on the rendering, because sometimes the print quality, the printer color prints never really work as you see in real life. So the idea of sharing these actual photographs is so that as a team we could look at it. What's there and what's the best solution to get this project moving?
Yeah, so I guess what we were thinking is with these big garage door type openings at the bottom, at the bottom, these, these openings are big glass, kind of modern garage doors that will open. You know, when this, when the street is complete and becomes activated, and there's trees along it and everything else, these garage doors can open and allow inside-outside kind of walking freely, such as a restaurant in the North End or something, a place like that. And but we thought that it was a very modern component to it. And we thought that these colors, which are on the back and the side of the building, really were very conservative colors, kind of banal, that really didn't go with the modern take of these garage doors. So instead, we were favoring the front of the building, which has kind of this cool gray, but still has, keeps the cream, which is on the bottom. So, and that we thought would be a good, yeah, so to, and then the bottom, like I said, is, is a red, would be a red brick. So that was.
The warm palette fighting that was going on, so knowing that we are having that brick that's a little more consistent, and it is kind of favoring the gray more than the colors at the back of the building, it made sense to just kind of remove all the different permutations, combinations going on around the building and make it consistent. And let the kind of the verticality be played with that lighter color, and then we have the darker gray, obviously, kind of playing around as a band around the building.
Yeah, so that said, that's where we are. I guess I would be most interested if you have any questions, or if you're, if you, if we need to, if people need to take a look at this for themselves. And my.
I mean, I mean, I've, I've, I've seen this, I live really close, and I've seen the site. I don't live so close that I'm like Kate out of this, but, you know, I live near Shaw's, and I, I'm not far from this property. And I feel like I have enough information to be content with the colors that Deepa and Tricia have chosen. I actually thought this was a done issue already. But, you know, I'm comfortable. I don't know where Kevin is with this.
Yeah, I mean, I've driven by it, too, and I honestly, the side of the building hasn't met me, but it's a little scary with four colors going on. But, I mean, I, I always knew this was an outstanding item, and I wasn't sure what was totally wrong with it from only seeing the front traffic by. So I think that you guys have made a kind of a good choice there with continuing those colors around the rest of the building. And I certainly trust your expertise a lot better than mine in picking colors anyways, so.
All right.
The only thing I was going to ask is just to kind of clarify where the project is and kind of the relevancy of some of these comments we've received as a planning board regarding traffic, et cetera, or residential concerns. So, you know, Peter, could you comment on that and sort of what, if anything, we as a board would do with that?
Well, the, the, number one, the project, Mr. Zamudo is trying to finish the project. And he's trying to, you know, and, and he's trying to put his best foot forward, right? And so he is moving forward, I believe, in units. He's, he started working on leasing the residential units. I can tell you right now that Mr. Zamudo and myself have worked behind the scenes, and I wrote a letter looking for local preference concerning the four affordable units. So that means I wrote the letter citing the need for local preference. So when they do the lottery for the four affordable units, that at least two of the units are, I'm going to say, your are tagged and or put away for current Ashland residents. And so Mr. Zamudo is trying to finish up the project, trying to lease the building, and he's trying to put his best foot forward. Regarding the email that we got today, I think Mr. Zamudo, the conversation I had with him, is he knows he has to paint the building. And Mr. Zamudo is planning to paint the building with a elevated lift. And so with that, he is waiting for the final landscaping touches. He, he's waiting to do his final landscaping touches in details until he gets the building painted, because he knows he's going to try to, and or he is going to paint the building with his men and or workers up on an elevated lift, which also have the ability to kind of tear up the glass indoor landscaping. I know the area what was pertaining to, and, and I said this earlier, I'm going to make a special visit when I get back out to Ashland and check out the site and make sure that it obviously fits the site plan and what was approved. But at this point, it, it is still a construction site. And I totally agree with the email that came through today is that the outdoor area was, was, was talked about a lot in the planning process, and I'm going to make sure that goes through. Regarding the sidewalk and the street trees, Mr. Zamudo has been working with Mas Dioty. And, and really to figure out the elements of where the sidewalk is going to be and where the street trees are going to be placed. That end of Pond Street, or the northernly end of Pond Street is going to, they're going to, to my understanding, that the state's going to work from south to north, up, up 126. And so this area may be the last to get the sidewalks. However, Mr. Zamudo is working with Mas Dioty to make sure that the sidewalks and the street trees are going to be in the right location. So both projects are kind of working in tandem together. Cover everything, or did I miss?
Yeah, no, I think that's really helpful. Essentially, the, the pocket park comment and the traffic comment, you, you're either going to make sure it's there or it's being addressed.
Yeah, I think the pocket park, it's not dressed up yet. It doesn't look like a pocket park. It doesn't look what, what, like it was proposed. But I think after the painting is complete, obviously landscaping and those investments will be made. And then, obviously, Anna, you know all too well, 126 is under a huge renovation. And, you know, we want to make sure that this project and the new road are going to speak to each other. And that no one is, is, that everyone's working together. And Mr. Zamudo has worked with Mas Dioty in, in regards to the sidewalks, you know, along the front of its building.
All right, so. I suppose we just should take a formal vote to, if every, if everyone is comfortable with it, to approve the colors as submitted.
Excuse me, Tricia. I think Kathy Rooney was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see that. Kathy, do you have a comment on this?
Yes. Design Review got a similar letter today. I'm kind of curious what the difference between this project and something like 100 Chestnut was, where the sidewalk to be landscaped is part of peer review letter for 100 Chestnut. And it doesn't seem to be that for this building. This building didn't have to also provide landscaping on the sidewalk. And then, on the current pictures, as, as we just flipped through, those trees are totally out of scale to the mass of this building. And they're going to screen it maybe in, I don't know, 15 years. But they're not even close. So I'm really, I'm concerned and discouraged about how this looks right now. You know, plus the dead plantings and the lack of the pocket park.
Well, I, I think, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the process is that the project has, it has approved drawings. It has approved site plan. It has approved project conditions. And as you go through, as this building gets toward completion, as you mentioned earlier, you'll be going through it with a fine-toothed comb to make sure that's the site plan, the pocket park, and things match what's on the, what is on the drawings. I believe in terms of the streetscape, that's all coordinated with the 126 Road project going in. Right? The trees along there, the.
That was, that was correct. I, you know, going back to the period process, which was, which was pre-COVID. I think this is the project, the first project we worked on together back in.
We met in person.
2019, we meet in person. And, and it was prior to the groundbreaking of the 126 project. But this was, obviously, the anchor, the gluey anchor of the 126 on Pond Street is the first project that we used upon the overall district. But we did talk about sidewalks and how they were going to interact. And I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, that the major theme, the concept of the concern from the planning board was that what was proposed worked with the 126 project.
Yet, do you have another question, Kathy?
No, I, I don't think, I disagree with what you're saying, but there's not much I can do about it.
Yeah, this project was approved long ago, so we have the, we have the documents as written to be followed through on. And then we have these colors, which we still have to, which in itself has been a unfortunate process, but which now we have to deal with.
So, I'll, I'll, we'll probably be bringing this up at our meeting, just because they wrote a letter to us, so it'll get discussed. But the comments I've heard around town, people are really discouraged of this building. They don't like it. They told, you know, we know what all the things are that are wrong with it. And I think we've got to do better in the future.
All right. Thank you for your comments. So, like I said, if, if all are ready at the stage, we can take, I assume, Peter, we should take a vote on it for posterity, that the colors are. So the, so the color decision can be made. I will let, I will let someone else make that, that motion.
That's a tough one, right?
What's that?
That's a tough one. I can make a attempt at.
This is just about the colors as shown in the rendering.
As, oh, as in the rendering, or do we want to say as in the field on the front elevation?
Well, I think this group of renderings, and then you can flip through them, Peter. So this is the front, obviously.
Yep, this is the front. This is the southernly side.
Yep.
This is the back of the building.
Back.
And then this is the northernly side.
So that is what would be voting. Again, it's just color, basically colors, basically colors, colors and materials. The material except for the brick is already there.
And, and I have these elevations submitted July 12, 2013.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the colors as presented on July 12th? Renderings for 12 Pond Road.
Approved colors as shown?
Approved colors as shown on the rendering.
I will second that. And we'll do a roll call vote.
Deepa, I can die.
Anna Testmanitsky, I.
Kevin McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So we have colors.
I am going to text.
Does the, do we need a couple minute break, people? It's, it's 9:30. The remaining part of our agenda is more just discussions, discussions, learning about some different things, updates, but do people need a little?
I mean, I wouldn't mind a couple minutes. Maybe we start at 9:45, just to give us like a water break and
Okay.
just to, just to reset briefly. I want to make sure child and dog and everything in the household is still here and not somewhere else.
That sound good, everybody? 9:45? Okay.
That's good. Yeah.
Back at 9:45.
All right.
Okay. Everyone's taking a short water bathroom break. You're on mute.
I got to have potato chips. I was thinking about that.
All right, I'm going to go check on my daughters and then come back. So I'll be right back.
Sounds good. All right, 9:46. So there's Kevin. So the next item on our agenda is um, the economic impact tool. Um, this was actually an item Kate has suggested for our retreat. Um, but, uh, but we obviously, I think we had three items on the retreat that actually we could address. And this, um, this uh, didn't make it to the, to the top of the pile. So um, so Kate asked about it and we put it on to our regular meeting agenda. So um, I've asked Peter to kind of just give a little background, what an economic impact tool is. Um, and to talk to us a little about it, a bit about it, since we have a general understanding that people can ask questions about. So all yours, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. So the economic impact tool, um, in theory, is a almost a data set, right, that's collected and all different variables can be plugged in. Uh, and then the output would be uh, a, a number, a fiscal number um, which would show um, the impacts to the community. And typically what has been, that I've seen is that um, economic impact tool um, helps um, forecast the property taxes that one would pay to the town um, if the project indoor, when the project would be fully developed. And so with that, um, going back and, and doing some research, um, back in, uh, I'm going to say, uh, well, for, there was a long period of time where the town of Ashland was permitting and, and jump in here if anybody, uh, who wants to, you know, add in. But um, over many years, the rail trail, that the rail transit district, RTD district, where Cyrus Apartments is, there was number, uh, number of plans and renderings um, and concepts. Um, and with that, RTD uh, project of the MBTA Access Road, which has now been um, renamed Memorial Drive. Um, as everyone knows, um, what was, was really the center point of, of what this, uh, I would say tool uh, was developed. And so back, um, there was a fact, back in the day, there was a company JPI. They did a lot of rend- renderings and they had the site under control and they proposed a lot of, a lot of things. Uh, and then obviously Camp and Ellie came in and they actually developed Cyrus Apartments, 398. Um, back when the town was reviewing and were looking at these different concepts and their components uh, of, of, of the projects in the rail transit district, they hired a company RG, uh, RJ, R, excuse me, R G K. Uh, and there is, there, there's a huge planning uh, consultant company in, in, in Massachusetts. And there's a gentleman said Craig Seymour. Uh, and Craig Seymour, uh, developed a tool, but what became to be known as the uh, fiscal impact tool. Uh, and that was used by Ashland, uh, it to kind of forecast the uh, the, the, the forecast, the, the, the amount of money and the, the amount of money that would change, that would come to the town as a result of a development and how it would really affect the community. So with that said, uh, the town of Ashland hired this private consultant, he developed this tool. And then that tool kind of stopped being updated around the time of 2012. Now this tool is a very um, a very deep end organized Excel chart with a lot of different labor statistics, a lot of data, a lot of forecasts. And, and so uh, the town and Craig use that uh, very efficiently, you know, back to predict, you know, what, what the, what the outcome and what the effects of the project would be for the town of Ashland. Um, am I going down the right path, Kate? Or Trish?
Um, I, I don't know, we need all that background more for the discussion, but
It gets a little bit more interesting. So, so with that said, all stories get interesting. Uh, so Craig Seymour leaves the company, G, uh, G R K. And Craig Seymour now works for the uh, the developer of the 10 to 60 Main Street Development. Now with that said, um, Craig Seymour has updated the tool, the fiscal impact tool that the town of Ashland had. Uh, and now Craig Seymour, who works for the developer, uh, on the 10 to 15, uh, 10 to 60 Main Street project, uh, which is an application that was filed with the planning board and, and every, one, two uh, a community meeting process, uh, has updated that tool. And he has actually submitted that uh, Excel sheet to me uh, and, and this morning, and I was able to go review of it. Uh, and I have asked Mr. Seymour to meet with myself, uh, and Emma and, and next week, so he could kind of give us a run through of what the fiscal impact tool is, how he developed it, and what the product is. And I think with that 10 to Main Street, it 10 to fit, 10 to 60 Main Street project, um, they are using the fiscal impact tool that the town of Ashland had created for itself back when Camp and Ellie was being created um, to measure the effects of a project, right? And so um, that's pretty much uh, where it stands today. So I do have a, a updated uh, tool, and I do have a meeting set up for next Wednesday, uh, with the architect uh, of, of that tool. Um, with that said, you know, I know, you know, fiscal impacts are a lot, right? And so um, and, and, and this is a specialized tool. Um, on the other side of it, Emma and myself in the office on the side project have been working just to kind of on, on a very, on, on almost like a simplified tool. Right? And, and where we just really take the overall budget, okay, uh, how many students, you know, uh, you know, looking at the, the cost per people of the actual public school systems. Um, asking, taking that, that, that development, that, that the application packet, when somebody submits a project in, in a forecast, okay, there's going to be X number of kids, there's going to be this, uh, there's going to be this, and that, this many people living here. Um, we have almost, we have also done the math, um, kind of reverse engineered, um, the overall budget for the town, the overall budget for school per pupil, how much, you know, per cost, uh, of a person, you know, the, 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 that we pay for police, for fire. Um, and then we can kind of factor in, okay, if we understand this, then let's multiply these back up. And then we can get a, a ratio of, okay, if we take in X number of dollars, however, we're going to net, we're going to subtract this amount. And then the town's going to net positive X number of dollars as growth capital, you know, for a project. Uh, so that's a lot, I know, but uh, we're going back to the fiscal impact tool, which I think Kate, you were trying to go towards. Um, we do have updated working tool. And, and I hope to get a better understanding of how this actually functionally works. So the planning office can update it and, and, and kind of keep it uh, keep it working over, over year after year. But what I was, I would say uh, inherited was it, was, was a fiscal impact tool that was not uh, updated through the years. And so therefore, uh, that was, that was a challenge.
So Kate, what are your questions about this? Where, where, what do you hope, what?
Um, I believe, so we have the tool and it may not be the right tool because I was there when that was developed and I, and I believe it is, I've heard from people over the years, it's a little wonky. Um, but I, I believe we owe it to um, fellow residents to, to run this impact tool that we we purchased one way or another, whether it was a mitigation through Cyrus or we paid money or both. And maybe we paid money to get it updated. So I, I don't think it's a matter of taking something that someone else gave without reviewing it. And I think you need to be very clear what's in it, like we can say cost to educated people, but at what point is the tipping point you need in your school, right? And I, I, I'm not saying, um, I have an answer to that, but I believe that stuff has to be evaluated. I, most projects I've seen on special permit is to evaluate impact on town resources. Um, I think I also asked Peter follow up is a mitigation, I know it may be limited what we can actually do. But I know some of our bylaws have specific mitigations written in, and maybe we can I mean, I think all those should be conversations. I think we owe it to ourselves and our um, community to use the tool. And be very transparent about what's included, what's not included. And publish that information. I don't, I don't understand why we would not be doing that for every special permit project.
So Kate, are you envisioning this as part of an application type of analysis kind of, or are you envisioning it as, do you see this as a applicant using the tool to tell us what their score is or whatever? Do you see this as us using the tool? Like what's the
I imagine to get some of the inputs, we would ask, um, the applicant, but we should have a chart to sort of verify. I mean, I think the best way to, to check that tool is the same person who made it checked it on another project, but we could run it for say, a project by a different developer and say, are there really those 20 school age children they said, or, or or did the development tool say there's only 10, but we really know there's 20? We have some recent projects we could run it against. Um, so I don't, I mean, I think some of that, I, I'm a proponent of updating our application. As you all know, I've talked about that, and I think some of that could be part of an updated application, but I think it's bonus on the town. Um, probably to like finish that product.
So if we paid for it before, I think it's great to figure out what it is and if we can start using it again. And it sounds like we may want to understand from Peter a little bit more about what he learns from this developer who created this tool. And, you know, I would really enjoy hearing about the methodology and kind of how do we know it's accurate type of kind of stuff, right? Like
Exactly.
And understand the accuracy of it. And if we have this tool, I think that as a board, it would be a great thing to consistently look at as a data point, right? I feel like, like any data point, it's up to interpretation. So, you know, we have projects all the time where someone's opinion of what is I'll use an example from earlier today. What is kind of you know, maybe a minor detail for one person, for a different person, maybe like something that just requires further debate. So, you know, a data point may be relevant for some of us, but very, very helpful for someone else. And as long as we understand what's behind it, I would be open to having it be a more, if we paid for it as a community, let's use it.
So it sounds like do we pay for the update instead of, or did he just offer that for free?
He offered that, that was, that came with the application.
Yeah, so he, th- this guy Craig, Craig Seymour, right? You know, he was a part of the, the two 10 to 50 Main Street forums that we had recently. He was there, he was representing 10 to 50 Main Street. Uh, he mentioned, um, I can send anyone the the link and the minute where he's talking, at least at one point that I had found. And um, you know, that he mentioned running the numbers for 10 to 50 Main Street. And then he mentioned putting it through the tool that Ashland uses as well. Which I didn't, I wasn't sure what was going on there because in my mind, he, he developed both tools, right? But maybe not, maybe that's not accurate information. Maybe one of them, he's using the, some other tool and then and then he's comparing it with the tool that the town bought and created, right? So um, so I'm also curious, and, and Peter, I think you mentioned this and that you and Emma also kind of do have done your own simpler little side things. And have you found them to be kind of in line with the the data of this tool, like more or less, you know, it's not going to be exact or?
I think that's still out for, that's still out for interpretation. Obviously, we just got the, the, I think, I think what we can do is run to a number one, to get a better understanding of the tool and how it works in relationship to the project. I think then Emma and I can take our tool and um, our, our, with a bit simple math, to see how it kind of winds up in comparison to the to obviously what the tool kicks out for the 10 to 60 Main Street project. Uh, and then kind of go from there.
I would assume it's, it's kind of like when you do your taxes and you're using TurboTax and then you do the math yourself on the side, just to see if it's doing it right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Please tell me you don't do that, Tricia.
I, I haven't done my tax, the husband does the taxes now, but I did back in the day. I wanted to see what it was doing behind the scenes. So.
I hear you.
I want to, I want to see it. I think it's a work in progress, right? I, I agree with Kate. A lot of towns use mitigation. Mitigation is a fine line though, because whatever you are asking for and you're taking, you have to make sure number one, it's an appropriate true scale, is that the relief that they're granting into a special permit, right? And so you always have to walk that fine line when you're talking about mitigation. However, many communities do have mitigation bylaws, you know, and, and it's for, can be for traffic for, you know, obviously we have mitigation for sidewalks in many instances where we leave sidewalk, you take a sidewalk payment. That can be seen as a mitigation in, in simple terms. However, I think this is something that's going to be, have to be a work in progress. And, and I think it's great that we're starting the conversation. I think we're just at the starting point, just to kind of wrap our heads around the next steps and, and to get a better understanding. From my point of view, I think I'm looking forward to just understanding from the architect of this tool, how it works and how it functions. And then, and then I think it will make sense that once we start that, that ten to sixty million project, we spend quite a bit of time and we ask Mr. Seymour to present the tool to the board and to the public. And that, a- a- as Kate kind of said, let's, let's make everything public and out in the open and transparent and to say, okay, how does this work and how does this actually get applied to, applied to a project?
I'd also be interested in knowing, and I asked this question before Peter, like, are there other such tools out there, you know, other competing, say, products? It'd be interesting to know more, more about that, you know? I, I have no idea. Obviously, I've never used one before, and I'd be curious, just curious to know.
I would, I, I'm still looking at it, and I think it'd be, I'd be great, it'd be great for me as a planner to type in, okay, because I'm not, you know, I'm a that obviously economic development planner is a specialty, right? And, and that's not the path that I went down. However, if there are tools, I think, you know, whatever the tools and, and that, and we're doing some research on it. But I'll be highly interested in tool to be able to type in a couple of things to say, okay, this is the square footage, this is the residential units, these are the proposed amount of kids, and then let's see what the outcome is, right? You know, the, the tool that is presented by Mr. Seymour takes into consideration labor statistics, which are updated, that's, oh, obviously those are updated. Employment, how much employment is created off the construction, how much long term is employment is created. Obviously, those are numerated into a, 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 into a, into a dollar, now, you know, into a dollar. And then also you get into proposed cost of construction, right? And that's something that we typically don't get into is that, and, and ask that question to the developers. And maybe that's a different situation to say, hey, what's your estimated cost of development, right? And we just don't do that right now. But i- i- if that's something that we need to do to understand the economics of the building, that's, that's a bridge that we're going to have to come across indoor or venture over.
So related to that, like mitigation, so we have these big projects, right, that we Ashland pays to go send our sewer to Austin Harbor through. And it's based on volume and say, are these projects increasing the volume? So now it's, it's a dollar a gallon, it's going to two dollars. They're making up the numbers, obviously. And I would think that those are things, if that's true, we need to seriously consider. I, I'm not even saying a mitigation, that's a cost to these projects that we that, that, that probably have to be brought up, right? And I, I imagine that that stuff isn't in the tool that the town has, but maybe it is. But I, it's, to me, it's a, it's a conversation about trying to get as much information to the public for a tool that we thought was worth investing in and a way to be fair to the public about if there are mitigation or to not have the other residents bear a cost of a development.
So Peter, you're going to meet with Craig Seymour, understand, try to understand the tool more in depth.
Correct.
And then you'll report back to us so that you can figure out a, a next step. A next step about how we understand this thing and how we use it. Is that, is that fair?
That's my goal, that's my goal, yeah. And I don't know about sewer, obviously, that's a whole different can of, I don't want to say can of worms, but that's a whole nother conversation. I think that's a, that's a great point, Kate, and I think that's a whole nother element to mitigation and to projects into, into a sewer fee, right? And then into a sewer betterment, right? And that's another conversation that, that could, that could be undertaken. And, and it's another avenue of mitigation, right? What, is there a better, is there a sewer betterment fee? But, but in a follow up question to that would be is, should that be dealt with by the planning board? Or should that be dealt with the DPW in the sewer as, as a, as a, as a fee to gain access to the sewer as a betterment charge?
So we, but I thought that when there's a connection, they're supposed to be paying that anyway. It's separate that we got kicked into a volume that there was added cost. Right, so there, I thought that they're supposed to, by our bylaws, pay be joining anywhere.
They do. There's a service charge and it depends on about the volume, but also the size of the meter. But I could be corrected wrong. I haven't taken work at the sewer.
I think the bylaws are per, per dwelling, per unit. But it isn't, I mean, I did, it's sort of related to this conversation that and I think everyone knows by now, like, I, I, I guess that's where my brain works a process, right? So if the planning board approves a project, we do not make that charge. How do we, the planning board, communicate to the people that would be doing that, that now they should be charging? That, that connection.
Well, well.
Because I don't want our board to be remiss about those things.
It's just, if it's a fact, you know, I can, I can reach out to the DPW and, and say, okay, for this project as proposed, what would the sewer charge be to connect? And I can always try to estimate, you know, estimate the cost of the charge that one would, would be would receive to gain access to the sewer. Because you are correct, we are, Ashland is at the end of the MWRA line. And we rent space in the framing, in the, in framing hand sewers for our flow to deal with.
So I think it's the select board because they're the water and sewer commissioner. So I, I, I may be reading the bylaw wrong, but that was my concern, like, oh, they're not watching all our planning board.
Yeah, but we can't go down the road of talking about sewer when really the agenda item is economic impact tool. So we have to make sure.
No, it's, I, it, I guess I consider it related to that, but that's fine. We can, I would ask with that another ten night.
Yeah, no, I mean, but it makes sense in terms of understanding how the tool might help us understand that. But without going into the specifics about that.
So what, what if we do this? What if Peter, it sounds like Peter is going to do a lot of learning through the creator of the product. And it sounds like we might, we might benefit as a board from a little presentation or memo from Peter that kind of summarizes, here's the two tools. Here's what we have, and then like, what is the select board's role? What is our role? You know, Peter could do a little blurb that sort of explains, okay, when the, when this tool is used, how does it impact certain costs? And are there certain costs that then we as a town through the select board or through whatever authority that we have, probably select board, that we would have a cost, right, or a fee? And then the way I would envision this is that if we understand how, kind of how this would work, we as a planning board could make recommendations to the select board, right? We could say, hey, on such and such project, this came up as a potential cost. And the select board could then evaluate. That's sort of my vision. I don't, but I think we, we need Peter to kind of share with us what that would be.
I think we all need to, I think I first need to learn a little bit about the tool. And I think as we go down this path, we need to, I, I'm going to ask the, the, the ten to fifty Main Street, and Craig, Mr. Seymour to prepare for a little presentation to the planning board as that public field comes around. So we all get a better understanding. But I think what we're saying is that we need to understand this, we would like a tool to understand the economic impacts. Because then maybe we could make recommendations to different departments of the planning board to edit the fee structures and/or to forecast these changes that are coming in or cause and effect items that are kind of, that are, that are being proposed by development in Ashland.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like it's two, there's two pieces to it. Number one is how can this data be used by us at all for our thinking, our decisions, our special permits, certain criteria of the bylaw it might be relevant to, right? And then there's the fee element, because this tool could actually show us that there's some fee component that the select board might want to be aware of, right? And without the use of that tool, we may not even think it through. So I think it's exciting and it's great that it could be updated and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
Right, so we have a, an action plan with regard to the economic, so yeah, economic impact tool. And Peter, just let us know, and you've had that conversation and we'll get it on the agenda to understand more about it.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Okay, next we just have reports from board members and town planner. I'm not sure we need to go through these, like, step by step. We seem to waste a lot of time when we do that and we, that, that we can get on discussions about everything. So, but I will just ask, is there a sustainability report? Nope, not this week. Design Review Committee, there's nothing new to report on there that I, that I know of. Comprehensive plan, Hannah, that's back to you probably.
I think it's Peter, if I recall. Am I making this up, that there was something we were sending over to the select board? Tricia made edits, I made edits.
That was sent to the select board. The select board only met once in July due to their summer schedule in meeting elements, and I think they are planning to meet again in August. And that's where that kind of stands. But that letter last edited was sent over to the, was, was sent to the select board. It was, it was sent to the town manager, which presumably went to Central.
Inclusionary zoning, we, we did have an inclusionary zoning meeting last week, was it? Yeah, where we tried to set, first of all, the, you know, first of all, trying to organize a frequently asked questions, not even kind of the wrong term, but a question and answer thing, because I think it was really hard to understand to get kind of the facts out, out there about what was being proposed. We're also trying to outline a series of meet, a schedule, a series of meetings that I think we discussed that maybe things would be introduced to the planning board in September. No, maybe it was at the end of August. Introduced to the planning board, discussions with the planning board. I'm getting at this backwards, either discussions with the planning board in September, no, the forums in September perhaps, and then planning board discussions in October? Or was it vice versa? I'm, I can't remember. But to have a longer process and more opportunities to, first of all, get questions out there ahead of time, information out ahead of time. And then being able to discuss it over several months, I guess was the, was the bottom line, even though I'm not remembering everything perfectly. I'll have that more in line next time. So, go ahead.
That was correct, you know, we're, we're at the, the planning office, we're working on some back sheets to put out, to kind of help educate and to give people a better understanding of what inclusionary zoning is and how it affects the community. And then also we reached out to M A P C, who was a consultant, to see if they're interested to help us do this process as their previous contract has expired. And, and, and so that's where we kind of stand. Patricia's were, you know, as Tricia stated, to kind of pick up where we left off. But to carry this kind of forward and to kind of regenerate that conversation about how, how affordable housing, how inclusionary zoning affects housing and how our S H I, which is our shared housing inventory, that everybody knows as our ten percent rule concerning comprehensive permits and chapter forty B developments. How is everything kind of, how is, how does everything interact with each other?
Yeah, so I have, I've asked Peter to start to put together a I asked him to do it for me, but it's something that'll be good to be shared, is a real understanding about those housing units in Ashland and how they come on and how they come off. And I mean, as of next week, we are out of Safe Harbor, because concerning forty B projects. So unfortunately, so how that starts to affect, you know, how we think about inclusionary zoning, how we think about affordable housing, how we think about projects that may come in and are kind of much more limited protection from them as of next week. So, you know, so just try to get all those facts on a piece of paper so that we all have them, that we all can understand what, what the issues are. So, so Peter and I are kind of working on that. Like I said, it was really for my bet, it was my personal request, but I think it's good information for everybody. Next thing on the agenda is CPC. Again, that, the only thing there, we have not met, the only thing on there is membership on that expires, my membership on that expires next month. So again, I'm just a reminder, if anyone has a particular interest in it, let me know. Otherwise, I will, and, and I will nominate myself to continue on the position. Just letting it be known that I'm not attached to it, but I will continue if no one has a is a great interest, I will. It's a learning curve for me, so it is, so it is, it is useful, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, if someone really, really wanted it, I, I won't, I won't fight for it. So, that's all. Scenic Roads Outreach, I don't think there's anything new on there.
I do know, but I do just want to give everyone the heads up. I'm working with Roy Carrer at DPW. There's a list of trees that he's come to me with that are town owned trees along scenic ways. And so that is something that's going to be coming up in front of the planning board. And then also, I just wanted to give everyone the heads up on.
And weren't we going to draft something announcing this, or some sort of educational thing that the new sustainability person with the town was going to help draft for that as well?
Starts on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
Kathy, do you have a quick question about one of these topics? This is kind of usually just planning board stuff, but I'll allow a quick question.
That's about scenic roads, and it's going to be a comment. So it's related to the last time you brought up the scenic roads, and I was talking about the speed limit on scenic roads. Because you go by so fast, you can't see the trees, let alone anything else. So today on my scenic road, I don't know how fast the car was going, I saw it because my office is right on the street level.
I'm really looking for a question. Do we, do we have a question?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question. When are you going to lower the speed limit on all the scenic roads in town? Because
Peter, is it in the, towards power, lower speed limits?
The town of the planning board does not have the ability that, that, that the regular speed limits on the public ways. That's a select board.
You can recommend it. And here's why I'm saying this. There were four kids on bikes on the sidewalk, which we do not have any proper curbing on. And luckily, the car missed them. Now, those kids have every right to be riding on the street, forget the sidewalk. We should have proper sidewalks out here on a scenic road. We should have
Kathy, I, I get it, but that's true on every road, scenic road or not scenic road. People should be careful of kids on bikes, right?
They should be careful to keep, and follow the speed.
They should, they, they should, but we can't control it on planning board.
It's a quality of life, and I'm bringing it to your attention, because I think it's something that you all could also be involved in.
Kathy, I would love to. Kathy, I would love to, if you please email me and I will forward your comment to Mr. Joe Mignani, who's the chair of the traffic safety committee. And they meet monthly and I'm sure they would love to put that on the agenda. And those are the type of comments into topics the traffic safety committee discusses in their meeting. So I'm happy to move that comment forward, but could you just please email me and as a summary and I can forward that along through the proper, through a proper channel.
I'll be happy to to email you, Peter, or include you in the email. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I don't think we have anything else at N B A T that's still awaiting the final guidelines. Is that right?
We are, we are one of three hundred and fifty communities waiting for the guidelines to come out. So we have nothing yet for those.
Okay. And then this last one on this list was again, something that Kate had found in the bylaws. And we thought it appropriate to talk about, I thought, I thought it may be appropriate to to visit it at this time. Peter, can you? Do you have it handy? Can you bring it up?
I'm just actually. Oh, yeah. You know what? Let me do that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, put my paper by while I was at first, but I will just grab it off of the website. Please hold on.
Well, Peter's bringing it up. Can I, can I kind of comment on on it briefly? Which is that, because I know, for the sake of time, we don't have a lot of it. This earlier project that we discussed today for Chestnut Street got me thinking that when we first start with a project like a year ago, we do send out notices to a butters, right? But when projects are continued, there's no automated notice that gets mailed out. The public kind of has to follow our posted agendas. So it got me thinking, a project like this, it's long, serious, goes on for a year. At some point, we start hearing things like, well, you know, this is important for the public or the the neighbors want this and we as a board don't necessarily have a good way to gauge that, because it's not like we do surveys. And the public, I think, starts to lose interest when something is a year in. So I think this is timely, that this is on the agenda. And and I was gonna mention something about this when we were discussing Chestnut Street, the importance of finding a way to engage with those neighbors and really understanding their position on different elements of the of whatever proposal we have. That was my comment. If we can find a way to do that as a board, when a project goes on for a year, I think it would be helpful.
So, yes, so this is a yeah, this is a note in the bylaws that's really about having a meeting almost prior to, almost prior to when the public hearing starts, right? And to my knowledge, in my time on the board, we have never done this. And that means that Peter hasn't done it either, right, Peter?
No, we've never really done this. And this is the first time it's kind of been brought up.
Yeah.
Obviously, we were here via, you know, when COVID struck in, and so we weren't immediately outside. We're still obviously on Zoom. But this is obviously a good time, I think, to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, there have been informal meetings before, before a public hearing where an applicant came before the board just informally. It was not part of a public hearing. I think that's different than what this is. I I'm not sure quite what it is. You know, it says the applicant or his agent shall attend such a meeting in order to assist the planning board in respond responding to public questions and concerns. So that that's what I'm, I'm curious as to what the board thinks can envision such a meeting would be like, that the planning board is responding to questions and concerns, but the project has not yet been presented, right? So what kind of what kind of
Oh, I, yeah, I mean.
What is that about, right? Like, it's not a part of the public hearing.
I mean, it's hard to frame that other than the first sentence. That, you know, we, we as a planning board could hold a fact finding and public info meeting. So to me, a fact finding and public info meeting has some significance. Fact finding to me means we are functioning as a fact finding you know, entity where there's a data point we want to explore. And the public info piece is a way to notify the public as to our fact finding. That's kind of how I interpret this.
Can you give an example, though? Like, what kind of because I'm, I'm trying to get my head around this thing.
So I'll use the Chestnut Street discussion earlier as a good example. It doesn't quite apply to this because that's an ongoing project and we're way past thirty days, right? But when the application kind of, or the applicant says, this is what the neighbors want, or this element of the project works for the public. How is that assessed? How is that determined? How do we, where's the kind of data point of that? So that's a fact finding mission, if you will. Like, I I got curious, like, what do the neighbors think about these elements of the project? We don't, you know, how can we figure that out? That is a relevant question to a project like the Wildwood District that's supposed to build that neighborhood. It's supposed to build that sense of community. We don't really have a representative for the community talking to us about that, right? So that project, the fact finding might be inviting all the different condo. What do you call them? In the Chestnut Street project, I think there's like little associations. So you invite them, you show them the application. And you do some fact finding. What's your view on this, right? Like, here's the application. Tell us. Tell us your concerns. Tell us your thoughts, because the Wildwood District has a a particular vision that is a public neighborhood vision. And we, as a planning board, want to do some fact finding about what that is for this neighborhood. That's kind of a live example I can think of.
So it would be like, you know, concerns, issues they have, like, say, again, say a hundred in Chestnut Street as an example, that they might, without even knowing what the project is, say, before, say, there's no information of the project up there except the application. Maybe it would be about, hey, we're already worried about our kids at the bus stop because it's, it's really crowded and there's a lot of traffic or
Yeah, or I think it would be a way for us to actively engage with the public and that could, that could frame how we organize our discussion with the applicant or how we make sure certain items are addressed. I mean, I'm literally just kind of coming up with it on the spot. In a more realistic example, it could be a big project that is complex, maybe a public project where we as a planning board want to gather specific data, I don't know, on certain elements of it, like the economic tool element that we were discussing earlier. Maybe we have a fact finding discussion about that element of a project, if it's a big public works project or not public works, but public building, let's say. So that's sort of how I would interpret this, that there are certain rare projects where we as a planning board might decide that there's a benefit to a fact finding public discussion, where the public can be part of the discussion about an application.
Well, I think that's the hundred chest, I mean, it's way past the time, but that's the perfect one. What's important to this neighborhood? Maybe what's important to them isn't lining up with the zoning, right? But at least we would have that fact finding, but maybe it does. Right? And and I think unfortunately for that neighborhood, some of the things we have heard would maybe fit with the zoning and maybe that's not the project, but I I don't see the harm. And I think also since it's public information, it's some of what Anna was saying, like, people can get lost in the process because they maybe don't understand that it can go along and that that can be another chance to engage with the public about the process that can be short, can be long. Mark DiSoni is a great person being involved in government. He told me he was frustrated tonight, right? And you did a great job, Tricia explained him. But all of those things, like the more we engage with our process, even if there wasn't a fact finding about that project, it's still information.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering if
I think it
I'm wondering if, in the same way that people had questions about, I think, like the the thoughts about upcoming ten to fifty Main you know, kind of spurred a request for an understanding of downtown zoning. Is this a, is this something where, again, we're kind of making it up because we haven't done it before, but is this something where we would say, okay, this project is located in this overlay district, this district that's defined in our bylaws. So this district has these criteria. This district was formed in this year. So we'll be looking at this part of the bylaw about this project in particular, because it's within this zone, like, you know, is like, I assume that would be part of the information. I think also, like you said about you could, this is a large project. This this public hearing process could easily go on for twelve months, right? That might be part of the process. For that kind of understanding. It might be an understanding about, understand, knowing when the, when the public has opportunity to to participate or, you know, to speak, but they won't always be given an opportunity to speak. You know, so that's, so that's understood upfront. I mean, I'm, I'm at there's a question mark after all this. I'm kind of throwing out things like, what is this? Because I've never had one either, you know, or what would we want this to be? I don't think, I don't think it can go down too far down the road of a public hearing, right? It has to be, it has to be held back, you know?
Well, I think we have to look at the language, right? It's fact finding and public info meeting. It doesn't say hearing, it's public info. And it also requires the agent of the applicant to be there, which means, if you think about it, it's the planning board engaging the public and the applicant in a fact finding mission of some kind that the planning board must have. Who else is fact finding? It's us, right? So I kind of look at this paragraph as we, the planning board, need some data point. And we are holding an informational meeting for the public and for the applicant to get what we're looking for. And it's a communication, it's a conversation, but that's kind of how I'm interpreting this. So it's not just like a free for all public hearing of collecting complaints. It's more that we're looking for something. And we are informing the public that we're looking for this and we need the public to share it with us. And we need the applicant to know that we're looking for this thing, whatever this thing is. And the applicant has to be engaged with us and the public in getting it. That's kind of how, how I'm looking at it.
I, I think that's a, that's a really great distinction because it's about information and not about judging the information at that time. It's just gathering and understanding the information rather than putting a judgment call on it, like this, this project idea, this whole application is bad because versus just facts, information.
Yeah. And I, and I think it will help us because if we, the Wildwood District is a perfect example. The Wildwood District, the bylaw has a certain vision, right? And we, as a planning board, would benefit from fact finding. I don't know what elements of that are we most curious about. For me, when I think of that one project, I think about community feel. I think about the definition of the neighborhood. What's the identity of the neighborhood? What are the neighbors worried about? What's their what is the feeling they have as a community, right? What's their interconnection? And how would this thing fit with it? I don't necessarily have that because I don't live there. So how do I capture it? Honestly, we haven't captured it in this particular one year process, because we haven't gone on that fact finding mission. We haven't done a survey. We haven't engaged that way with the public. So I don't know what the answer is, because this particular piece doesn't apply to that project. Although something tells me the applicant would be open to that. But in in the ideal world, a project like that starts, starts there. Do you know what I mean? And then that would frame the discussion potentially for a year where we could reference that initial data finding point and understand our mission, understand our value statement, if you will, as what are we trying to accomplish?
I mean, I mean, I think a lot of those data points come up in the public hearing, those kind of concerns, you know, they, they they come, I don't think they're that it didn't happen because we didn't have this meeting. What I'm wondering about is in meetings like this is that it offers a place to to establish the playing field so that everyone knows the you know, how things, how things work, they have the information to be able to follow along the public process and better contribute to it. Because with their, with their questions and concerns, because they understand the process, which I think has been shown that people don't, you know. So anyway, I mean, obviously, it's getting, it's getting late, but you know, we will have you know, the next thing will be applications received. And this, this is something we should think about. So.
So that we're, we're running thin on the timeframe if we wanted to implement this for the latest application.
Yeah, so why don't we let No, what were you gonna say, Kate?
Well, I, I don't know that we're that probably the part about saying that applicant be part of it is probably we would have to go by that exact thirty days. I suppose if we didn't go by that, we probably have a little bit of a grotto month thirty days. Like, who's to say? I don't think there's a bylaw saying we can't do something like this without following that. But if we wanted to do it and and go to the letter of this, we do not have much time.
What I went, when was the application for ten to fifty Main Street received?
It was, we have plenty of time. Am I on mute?
I know, now you're good.
Okay, we have, we have time. And the, the, the ten to sixty Main Street obviously came in last week. There was, there was, it did. However, it not too much, not that many days have passed. You know, I think I have, I think I can, I would like to schedule the public hearing and we need to schedule the public hearing for the second meeting in August, which is going to be August twenty fifth. But before that, obviously, we do have time and to to, to to set up a meeting of this nature. I think my biggest question is is, is what's, what's everyone's idea behind setting up a fact finding meeting, a public information meeting? You know, all the application materials online, is this a site visit? Is this a Q and A with myself and, and as planning director? And they represented from the applicant. It was all planning board members there. It's not the public hearing, so we can't really discuss the project. And and so I think those are, need to be discussed indoor flushed out a little bit before, before we take the next steps. And then the second application, I, I do want to just mention briefly, and and I know we're running out of time, is that there is going to be a proposal for the Walgreens at three ninety nine Union Street to be removed. And the development of a Starbucks in its place. That application regarding the drive through is going to, they have applied for the Z B A. However, a trigger site plan and that's going to become a planning board as well. So I just want to put everybody on, on notice that those, those are the two, two very good projects that are coming up, you know, on top of what we're already dealing with right now. With the hundred chest, not in the five one one street, but but I'm happy to schedule a meeting, you know, for a fact finding mission, you know, a fact for fact finding and for public information. But, you know, my view is this a site visit? Is this a Zoom meeting? How do people would like, how would people interpret this? You're on meeting, so.
I mean, I think we would have to post it as a public meeting, because although we're not holding a public hearing for kind of general comments, it would still need to be
Well, there'll be a forum of the, there'll be a forum of the planning board, so it would be a posted meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. The public, and so we couldn't really, because it's not, I would have to, see, my question is we're not going to discuss the project. We're just going to take in information, because the public hearing is where to be deliberate.
I mean, presumably, somebody has to explain what the fact finding is, and there has to be some sort of public information gathered, right, or exchanged. Gathered, right, or exchanged, so. You know, I would think that we would need to post it as a public hearing, but it's not, we have to have a mission to it. To me, this is, we don't just do it as a public hearing on a random project. We need to have a reason for it, and we need to be looking for something. What is our? What is the fact finding that we're doing? What is the public information piece that we are focused on?
Public hearing, is that what you're intending to be using, that you would need to post it as a public hearing? This this was that your intention? Maybe, maybe it spoke, but just wanted to be clear about what you're thinking about.
I think what I'm thinking is if we're all there.
Public meeting.
Public meetings, okay. That's what I meant, that's what I meant. Um, that's what I meant, so. I mean, I I think with any application that is of. Some type of significance, we need to think about how this applies and if we want to try it. So. For for these projects that Peter mentioned, what, you know, are there particular? Data points that the planning board would want to explore and focus on?
Well, yeah, it's interesting for this, it's interesting for ten to fifteen Main Street, because it did have, I mean, there was a downtown. Zoning forum, it might, I did, was not there, but I assumed it wasn't focused just on ten to fifty Maine, I think it was supposed to be. In general, but that's not, doesn't matter to me. And then there were two public forums specifically about ten to fifty Maine. That were not planning board, not select board, not, they were purely um about public input. Wasn't really informational, I would say, it was more about just public input, you know, um. Letting people ask questions about the upcoming project, you know, so um. So it doesn't really fit into this category, so I don't, I I'm wondering a little bit how this would be different. From those three meetings that we've already had about ten to fifty Maine. Though none of those necessarily involve the planning board, I mean, I happened to be there. I didn't really have a role, except to introduce the speaker, right? Um, or the the moderator for the. We had, we got an outside person to be a moderator um for these public forums, and so I introduced the moderator. But it was not a planning board thing. Um, and the the zoning forum. Was hosted by the town planner, but the planning board wasn't there, at least not all of us, right, or not a quorum. Um, but this, so this is different, this is, I don't, I don't think nowhere in this does it say that the whole planning board has to attend. I mean, we would list it as a public meeting in case everyone could attend, but I don't think it would be required for everyone to attend. So.
Peter, just so you know, we can still see your screen and letter to Lisa, I don't know if you mean to show it to us.
That means I was just going to show everybody and think of a lot of different things. And I'm trying to check all the boxes.
So, I mean, the one thing I was gonna say is. I have not read the the application yet, so I don't know what fact finding. You know, I personally would recommend for us as a board. I think with any application, we just, you know, now that we're kind of reminded of this bylaw, thank you, Kate. I think we have to think about when is it worth it to have this happen? And what is the fact finding that we're on, right? Is there something about that particular project from a planning board perspective that we would want to explore at the beginning of an application? Is there something about? How we want to frame our long-term work on that project, where we want to take a deep dive and use this bylaw, right? Um. And I I don't have the answers yet, because I haven't looked at the application personally. Um. So I don't, I, you know, I think maybe we should all do that and come back and ask ourselves that question together. Um, if we have time and not miss the thirty days or whatever, like, I don't know how that part works. So.
Given the size and the importance of the project, I think it might be worth. Ha- just having such a meeting and kind of seeing how it goes, right? I don't think it has to be on our normal planning board schedule, I think it, I think it could be of a one-hour dur- duration. That whatever time we find that some people can make it, I don't think the whole planning board needs to be there, I think it's way too much pressure with the rest of our schedules. But to basically just offer this opportunity to answer questions, gather data. Um, to, like I said, I'm still not sure what the data that we're gathering is, except.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure.
Uh, yeah, so what if we, like, I mean, I could, just talking out loud, like, the his, the historical element of the building. As a planning board member, that would be an interesting data point for me to understand, like. I don't know if we want to invite the historical commission, or. What is that little building downtown that deals with Ashland's history? Thank you, that's what I meant. You know, I don't, I don't know if we want to have them there as a data, data point, fact finding. Expertise of theirs about that building to see the, to see what it means as far as the history of Ashland. Um, maybe, obviously, the applicant is there, so the applicant, you know, could offer us. Um, the applicant, like, I'm trying to think of what data point I would want from the applicant, I think I'd, I want to understand the applicant's vision. Right, of of what is the applicant's kind of perspective of how this will work in Ashland, this 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 application. Um, so off the top of my head, those would be the two things I'd be interested in as a fact finding, if you will. Um, so that I can see the history and the vision together. Um, maybe the economic development um person that we have, Beth Reynolds, I would love to have her there. And hear hear her views about kind of the viability of the of the economics of all of this. Because I'm sure she can, she can give us a layer to that discussion. Um, so, yeah, those would be the three data points I would be interested in personally. History, economics, and the the vision of the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to hear everybody's input on it, but I don't know, maybe if we don't have any definitive answers.
I would almost like one invite those three entities, right? And obviously, the public, so.
Yeah, well, that's the kid, that's the hard part for me, it's like, it seems to me when I read this, that it's really about the public, it's not about us bringing in people to. Discuss stuff, I mean, maybe the historical commission. Um, I I'm not sure, it seems to me that. Bringing stuff to us, not us.
I mean, it says fact finding and public info session, right? So I think we, we can guide that in whatever fashion we want, as long as we allow the public to. To be part of that, part of that information session, part of that sharing of data. So a- again, we can't just like randomly have a meeting and see what happens, I mean, we could, I'm open for that. But the way I read that bylaws, it is that we need to have a, something we're looking for as a planning board, right? What's our, what are we trying to accomplish with this application and this unique, one-of-a-kind meeting that we've never had before? Um, so I I almost envision, you know. That we invite those three entities, or maybe five more, that others on this board might be looking for. And we invite the public, and we just kind of explore some of these topics that we, as a planning board, are interested in. The public gets to comment and listen and hear. And it ends up being a true data gathering and info session. That's what it's going to end up happening, because all, if all of those data point experts are speaking. That's what you're going to end up getting, you're going to end up gathering data and getting information. But I think it has to be from our unique authority as a planning board, it has to be a planning element, something that. That we're looking for, do you know what I mean? Not just like, ooh, let's see what happens and let's see who shows up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm I'm reading it differently, I I I'm fine with your your vision of it. Um, it just, it seems more like a transparency thing, an opportunity for the public to be in there early. Versus for facts, I I don't see this fact finding for us, I see it as fact finding for the public, but. But but that's just, that's just a different little twist on the reading, um, Kate, what?
I mean, I, I'm open to that, I'm open to that reading as well, I'm just, I'm just trying to find a way, like, let's say we go with your reading, Trisha. We still may want to create a little bit of a organized mechanism to do that, and and the public may actually appreciate. Some of those data points as a way to frame the project.
Yeah. I am completely open, I. Kate found this thing, what was your vision of it?
Um, I was excited, because I was just reading over the site plans, I'm like, oh, kind of, um. I think the worst case of it would be us doing our best to inform the public of, sometimes these processes are long. Sometimes you're not going to get comments, sometimes you can, instead of having them frustrated. Here's where you can check if it's continued, we try to keep that up to date ahead of time. Here's how you can get in touch with the planning board, I mean, if that's the worst case, I I don't think that would be a waste of any time. And I think some of the stuff Anna's saying, um, would be helpful and. Um, try to show that we're trying to do more planning than just reacting to applications, because unfortunately, we're in that cycle. We, we can't apologize for that, we don't make up when they come, but I I. Imagine probably most of us are a little frustrated, that's important role spend lately. Um. Right, we want to be planning as well, so it would, it would tip. A little bit that way.
So if you were, if you were not on the planet, it was a few, if. Not on the planning board, you're just a resident, and you see this notice for this. Information gathering meeting on this project, those are the things that it would be learning a little bit of the history. It'd be a learning a little bit about the zoning, it would be learning a little bit about. Um, the the process, um, you know, all all of those things, right? And probably not going in depth about any one of them, but getting this feel. For the the issues that'll be involved, or the.
I mean, I I'm all for zoning and process, but I do think a lot of that has already been covered, it it never hurts to cover it again. It sounds like Trisha, some of those other meetings you've mentioned have focused on those elements, so.
What was apparent in those meetings that people still didn't understand the zoning? That was what came across to me.
So I I I'm always for reviewing it again, for sure. Um, but I, you know, I I I also want the planning board to feel like we are. Not only reviewing the bylaw that we stare at all the time, thank you, Kate, for finding a section I haven't stared at for a while. Um, but that we, you know, we start to frame the project as well as to like elements that we. Want to figure out, right? And so when I look at that bylaw, which I haven't done in a while. Those are some of the things I think about, I think about history, I think about the vision of developer. Because this is private property that we're looking at, and and I think about economics of of what that area is all about and and how it works, right? What 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 happens in that area? And I want to figure out as a planning board member, how to plan in a way that balances. Those, those three interests, me personally, I want to figure out how to balance the the history of Ashland with. A private landowner right to develop with the economics of all of it, and how to make this work big picture, so that Ashland is historic. Unique, vibrant.
Alright, so.
Right.
So, um, so where do we go from here? This this project, the ten to fifty Maine, is having a public hearing on the second meeting on August. That that, so this informational meeting would have to happen prior to that, I think, to be really useful and to set the right tone. We have one meeting before that on August eleventh. Do we talk about this on August eleventh, and then put a date um on the calendar in stone, and say this is when we're going to have it? And we'll see if we can get people at that time who can participate. Um, is that, what what is the game plan? Because we do have limited time, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good game.
Want to do, we need to do it.
I like that game plan, if if, yeah.
I think we should set the date, I think we should say August seventeenth, which is a one, which is a Wednesday, which is going to be before the meeting.
Alright.
Uh, we say we're going to do a Zoom meeting, it's going to be a public planning board meeting. I'm going to reach out to the applicant and say that we're going to try to exercise this, to please have representative present. Obviously, we're not going to dive into the details.
No.
Um, but we can at least try to answer some questions. Like Trish said, it's not a mandatory meeting to attend to. However, it's uh, it i- i- it's just a way to to outline some of the interests. Look, let community members talk about the interests, history is the number one, I think I could run on that one, and just as an example is to say. We want to know the history of the buildings, right? We want to know, understand the, how the building. Wh- what, what, we want to understand what these buildings met to Ashland, right? When were they built? You know, is the granite, was the granite granite, you know, cord in Ashland, right? Just questions of that nature, right? Uh, which would help kind of outline the project and bring in the project. Um, when I look at this applicant, this process, I mean, when this, when I look at this bylaw. I also believe that some of the intention was that the planning board would hold a public, you know, a site visit. And I think it's also important to do that, uh, especially on these big projects, I think we drive, we've all noticed building. And we all know the other building, we'll run, you know, over off of uh, Union Street, the the Walgreens, but I think uh. To visit the site on foot is a different situation, and I think that's something that we can do after the public meeting opens, and I think that we should do that. And I, and I think there's, both projects are important enough to take a walking site visit um of the planning board. But uh, that's my two cents, but I personally would like to pick a date now, uh, because I think if we wait till the eleventh. It's going to be too close um to say we're going to meet on the seventeenth, which is the following Wednesday.
Yeah, and to get the word out there, which we all know is important, so. I I agree, I mean, I personally will not be able to attend on the seventh, on the seventeenth, sorry, I'll be traveling that day. Um, but uh, but I think it's, like I said, I don't think there's any reason that the whole planning board needs to be there, I think we need to be represented. Um, so if someone else thinks that they can be there, I think we should go for that date. And um, set up a one-hour Zoom, if it's at seven o'clock. Seven to eight, you know, a time when most people are.
I mean, I.
Choosing between TV or planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm definitely available on the seventeenth, and I'm sure hopefully others are, the only thing I would ask is if we're going to have a one hour, right? I think we need to think of some kind of agenda, and again, I keep coming back to those. Like, can we invite those three folks, or somebody from those elements, if you will, like? Is Beth available? If she's available, I I'd like to have her there, so she could be part of it. Um, you know, can we ask the historical society to send someone with whatever data they have, books, pictures, whatever? Um, so that we understand that a little bit more from, you know, a history perspective. Or the library might have some resources, you know, they might be worth reaching out to. Um. Uh, you know, I'd love to see those folks invited actively, and literally be made part of the panel, if you will. So that we're not just kind of presenting. A regulatory process presentation, and then a massive kind of. Public session of concerns, but rather, we're gathering, you know, we we're hearing from specific folks on certain elements, and then we're opening it up for a discussion.
Alright, given that it's getting late, so can we set this meeting for the seventeenth, is any, are are there other people that think, yeah, I'll probably be able to come for an hour? On the seventeenth, seven to eight? I guess, otherwise, just have to cancel it, Marcel might be able to. Um, so, and I think, Peter, if we can reach out to. You know, those those folks with, you know, and it could be, there's with that, but you know, not that they have to provide a presentation, it's not about that. But um, not putting any stress on anyone to to create something, but in, just in order to give um. A history, you know, or if they they have information, that's great, but not low pressure.
Yeah, and I think also just the, not, and I know we're running late, is that uh, it also gives the applicant. The opportunity to find the interest of the community, and then to tailor his, tailor their presentation to the community. So I think it's, it could be a two-way, it's obviously could work in both directions.
I think it's important not to have. The applicants hold, and they have a sizable project team at this point, right? To keep it to minimum, someone who, it's not about the project, it's not about the project that is designed. It is about the project, but we have to be careful not to cross that line into talking about the public hearing, this is information gathering and. Information, you know, and public information, data finding, whatever the things are, it's not the public hearing. And we want to make sure we do not, people don't come for that reason, and we're not crossing that line, to me. So.
So who would, I, you know, who would facilitate it? Would that be Peter? Would that be someone of us? And would we have, you know, would we create an agenda? Would the applicant kind of do a massive presentation that would eat up half of this, like? I think we need to think about the structure, right, so that we don't end up with something that is not what we intend. Um, so, you know, I I'd like to as much. Um, so you know, I I'd like to as much of it as possible to be driven by actual data and public info. Um, I I don't, I think this is more of a listening for the applicant and very specific presentation from the applicant on key points of whatever it is that we're gathering. Um, I don't know if that makes any sense, but.
We can't have a public here, right? Because that is a different process and that has to be formally posted and advertised, right? And so I, in my, I I don't think it's a, it's not a presentation by the applicant. You know, that is the public hearing, you know. You know, now that we're talking about, you know, the other question is, do we just continue to have a discussion about this? And then just go right to the public hearing? You know what I mean? But because we don't want to make sure it's something that doesn't get out of hand, right? But.
That's that's uh, that's a concern. Someone's going to have to make sure it is.
I am going to have to moderate this, right? In my eyes and the applicant's going to be there, but it's always questions, right? And I don't want to cut people off and say, no, this is the public hearing process, blah blah blah. But
But in my eyes. Particular project has been around for a long time. Um, so having to reinvent the wheel at this point and go back and pick up stuff, it just feels like a waste of time. Um, and it's not fair to the applicant as well, right? It's it's been there on an actual table for quite some time. Um, so I think you have to be just be mindful of the process that we are starting to set up. Is it really worth our time? Is it worth the public's time? And then are we going to create issues of having to take like Peter said, like, don't say this, don't say that. And starting to monitor that one are kind of frame this. I don't know whether this is the right project to try this out. Feels like totally not the right project. I mean, if it's a new project, you start from scratch. Try out something that we've never tried out. That's a different thing, but it feels like this is not the project for it, but that's.
I mean, to me, this is the application to the planning board. It's ground zero. It's the beginning of the process. So I know it's been alive in this town for a long time. But it's a planning board bylaw allowing the planning board to begin the process in this fashion. So to me, this is just the starting point for the planning board. Um, and I, and it's a big project. We're probably going to be looking at it for a long time. Um, and it's like, it's going to evolve. A lot of projects evolve, right? They change. So what existed prior to the application may not be what exists six months from now. Um, so I I disagree. I think this is probably the type of serious project that is a good fit for this, but I, but I'm not feeling that we're ready. I I feel like we need to really rethink. You know, Trish is not going to be there, so our chair is not there. We don't know if Marcelo can be there. We're kind of picking a date without, like, I would prefer that the majority of us are physically able to attend or virtually able to attend. And that we nail down an agenda in a much more organized way. I'm I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable with just kind of flying by the seat of our pants. Um, and trying to contain an hour discussion with the public. Um, I I feel like, yeah.
Well, we just continue to vet this out and think about it. I think that's where we are. I think at the end of it, I think after listening to everybody, I think we need to continue on as we typically do. But I think Kath, Kath, excuse me, Kate has uncovered something that we need to vet out and and we need to kind of and get a better understanding of it. The planning board has got a better understanding of and agreement. So when a project does come along, we have a process that we can undertake.
Yeah, it's it is important to understand this project has been out there. I mean, those two zoning, they went through the whole project.
Yep.
Um, that the what the project looks like, what the ground plan is, it's all out there. So we're definitely not starting from scratch. That's why I'm trying to, how do we back away from all that stuff that's already out there? And have it really be about informational, because you can watch those tapes and you can see what the the concerns are of the people in Ashland. They're they're already pardon, they're already on tape, you know, so. I don't know, I don't know if those are easy, but those are, they were recorded, I can, we can, they, you know, but um, I don't know if they're out there on YouTube because it wasn't a public hearing.
Why don't we just keep this as an agenda item where we can, obviously, I think this is a great conversation and then at the eleventh, we can maybe follow up with another conversation about it and then and then kind of go from there.
Alright, so the only thing then left on the agenda is the topics for future meetings and this I'm going to leave for a future meeting, but the point is that um, Kate had sent me along with this zoning bylaw that she found, just other ideas. Kind of like before we had our retreat, like we all submitted ideas for discussion topics at the retreat. And um, and we should think, not today, but think ahead to a next retreat. And so I would just ask people that when they have things that are like, this should be discussed by the planning board. To either keep a list, send them to me so that I can keep a running list, so that we've had this fresh list of topics um, to at least pick and choose from when we, when we get to one of our, when we get to one of our retreats, so.
I'll keep that list as the clerk if you want to send it to me.
Okay, sure. Yeah, um. I think uh, you can I would say, I would say send them to me and Peter and then we will forward them to Kate. So people have just just general ideas about about planning board discussions. So things we should be addressing, you know, whatever, questions about how things work, whatever it is, so.
What are we? I mean, I know that we're going to keep talking about the prior topic on the eleventh. Do we, do we want to at least send out a Google? What's it called? Uh, survey of when we're available so that we could find a time when Marcelo and Tricia and all of us can can in theory attend, even if we choose not to. Um, do we want to kind of roll the ball on figuring out availability after the eleventh?
Send out a doodle poll, but you know, it's up to the, it's up to the committee. It's up to you guys. I'm happy to do it.
I guess I I'm kind of looking for a couple of people who want to be in another meeting. I'm kind of meeting doubt. I'm kind of at capacity right now. And um, it, I don't think we need all six of us there. And if there's people that can be there and are like, yeah, I would like to guide this through, then I'm I'm good with that. So. So we can.
Do we?
You know, if if people want to think about it and send an email, if there's, if there's two or three people that are like, yeah, I'm really into this, we'll find a time when the three of the, that those people can meet.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So I don't, we don't know what Marcelo thinks of it. It sounds like Deepa, you're not necessarily thinking it's a good idea to begin with. Um, you know, do we want to make sure we have the majority of the board wanting to do this before we? Like, where are we as a board? Like, do we definitely want to make this happen? Or do we still need more discussion with Marcelo present? That part is not so clear to me. Like, Kevin, are you interested in this?
And I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I do kind of understand the point that this has almost already happened without us on this project where and in those meetings, the applicant has already presented project as a whole, which which then may lead to the kind of cross contamination of this meeting. And what its purpose would be. So I guess I don't really fully understand how we would keep it to its intended purpose of fact finding without talking about the project itself. And the details of it, you know?
And and again, I think the only way to do it is to define what the data is. If there's three or four data points that we as a planning board announce, the planning board is interested in gathering data on these three or four topics. We've invited these folks, we're inviting the public. If people are willing to come to us and share data on these points, please come. I think if we'd frame it that way and we invited that way in a very kind of organized fashion, it's less likely to turn into a free for all. Where it sort of loses control um and becomes something that we're not doing, which is we're not doing a formal public hearing, right? Um, so you know, it sounds like we might need more time. I'm more than happy to put that in writing for the board's consideration. I think there's an opportunity here um to try something, but it would certainly be wasteful if we do it without an agenda, without a a specific organized data point we're actually seeking.
My hesitation is also kind of it's the story of the project, right? The history, how the history got tied into this project or how it will get tied into the proposed project. And it could be also because I was part of the working session, so see how that history kind of started to kind of tie into the project. Obviously, none of us know what is coming, but it feels like we, by doing this, we're taking away that story that the project is about to bring to the table. Um, but I think I'm struggling from that point if he was like, I really don't want to have this information, be part of the information because I want to hear the story of the design of this project that's coming up then kind of um segregating the two. For me, it's a part of the process. It's the design process and it doesn't feel like it's a data point collection. Like, yes, when it was like a forty yard project versus forty B and Y, which was one or the other, that time it made sense to really go through. What is a forty yard project? What does it do to the town? But now it doesn't feel like that's what we need. So I I I feel like I'm not really looking forward for the info session, but that's just me.
I personally, we just need to discuss it more. I think jump, I don't, I'll jump into, I think just ride and just doing it is is not the right move at this point. I think we need further to discuss it and because I think this project does that, you know, we've had some stuff, but the last thing I want to do is to have a meeting that goes awry before the public hearing that 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 doesn't, that doesn't allow the F project to get off, to 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 give you if you don't give the project its own opportunity to to kind of get off on the right foot. You know, and we, we don't, because we haven't nailed down indoor, really have a good understanding of what we want out of this meeting.
So Peter, is there a public hearing locked in already for the twenty fifth? There's, there's still an opportunity to push that so we could talk about it at our next meeting and.
Their project, no, that one's kind of locked in, you know, with I, with, I got the application and then I have to, you know, we have to typically looking at the regulations. We have a forty five days to schedule the public hearing. Uh, and so, you know, I I I moved it um, to the twenty, I put it on the twenty fifth, hoping that we would have this meeting and then obviously the meeting on the eleventh to kind of to focus on Hundred Chestnut and Five O One Pond Street. And and the McDonald's, which is obviously was continued to be eleven, but to to focus on those projects and move them along, so so we we do this because at some point at the next meeting in September, I think that I would advise that we start staggering the the applications once a month until we kind of can get through some of these bigger projects. Because we we just don't have enough time in our meetings and to to go over this stuff, so I think we went over. So I think, you know, if if on twenty, on the, on the twenty fifth, we should probably move everything on the twenty fifth to the second meeting in September. Then everything on the eleventh is probably going to have to jump to the first meeting in September. Because we just don't, our agenda is obviously just not, we just don't have the capability of handling that many applications unless everyone wants to start meeting once a week. And and I don't know, I don't think anybody wants to start doing that. Or having special one-off meetings to discuss one project to go over.
I mean, here's what I'm, I'm, you know, Trisha, Trisha and Deepa both were very involved in this project previously. So, you know, those of us who are less involved may have more interest in the dat- data gathering, but I also feel like not having Trisha and Deepa there sends the wrong message to the public. So I for one think we need to put this topic aside for now and move forward. I I think it's going to be unproductive to have this this public session at this point. If we as a board change our mind, you know, then I think it has some use. But I I think without the chair and Deepa there, it's just not the right message.
Yeah, I I don't agree with that, but you know, I think, I think things can, it can spread around involvement, you know, um, but um, but I think, I think we do have to, I don't think we're going to come to any, I think, let's just leave it open. Let's just go on the eleventh and see where it goes. See if we, everybody sleep on it and then some, um um, you can get, can they get back to me on it, Peter? Um, this type of topic?
I think that would be most. No, I think that would be most appropriate.
Okay, or me and Peter, you know?
Yeah. I think that would be great.
And I'll add that, you know, we're all independent adults. Like, I will do that data gathering on my own to kind of catch up. Um, so you know, we can all kind of do our jobs and get educated and get caught up.
And you, and it kind of where you're right, but I thought we should also think when we're thinking through this for August eleventh, I think what we should we should take a step back and not focus this process based on one project. But the projects that are to come, right? Obviously, we're going to have larger projects like this coming to the town. What is it that we want to set up is what we should look at and not kind of get tied to this one project. So when we're thinking about it independently, I think that's how we should look at it and approach it versus trying to get tied to one project. Because again, like, right now, the five of us have very different approach to the same project. So um, it may help when we think about it. What is the right thing for us to do for planning board side moving forward when we have such large projects?
I I, the bottom line is Kate has uncovered a bylaw that none of us were necessarily deeply thinking about. And we can now put it into our gray matter, contemplate it, think about it and figure out long term how to do it. And on this particular project, it's just not the right time. That's kind of what I'm feeling and we'll regroup. And I think it's a learning, learning process for all of us. Um, I have, you know, I can see it from from the perspective of of kind of, you know, Deepa, you've seen this project for a long time. This is just not going to have the same value to you as it might to me. So we move on, you know what I mean? I I think that we can figure this out and in the future, we may have a different view, so.
And we may think about it differently when the comprehensive plan comes to start to take shape, right? We may have a lot more information under our belt to make certain calls. And maybe we would think about the same thing in a very different way one year from now on when that that comprehensive plan is like taking shape and we may have something to refer back to. So I, I think this is just a process that we need to think on the long term.
Alright, well, let's put it on the, let's put it as a note for August eleventh. We can visit it if we want. Um, if we feel that there's a need, that there'll be space for it to to discuss it, but um um, and people give it some thought, we, and and we'll see where it goes, you know, goes from there, so. Alright, longer discussion on that than I had thought, but it is, it is time to call it a night. Luckily, we don't need to review the meeting minutes because apparently they they didn't go out. Thank you, Peter. I really appreciate that, that you did not send them out. Grateful. Um, so, um, so I think we're good for tonight unless anyone has any final comments, because I'm tired.
I think we're good.
Alright. Thank you, everybody, sticking it out. Once again, we'll see you. Oh, motion to adjourn. Alright, a roll call vote.
Anna Tesman, it's the I.
I'm a claim, I.
Trisha Kendall, I, the favorite vote of the night. Alright.
I guess.